All right, everybody ready?
All right.
Good.
Thanks.
All right, good evening. We'll call to the school board work session of October 14th for orders. Sarah, would you please call and roll?
Aldridge.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Bowerman.
Yes, ma'am. Will you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we've got a fairly meeting agenda tonight, folks, in terms of content. Do we have anything that we're adjusting on the agenda, Sarah, Mike, anybody?
Five dot two.
Are we looking at that? Or we, what was the?
It hasn't been requested, just something that I've.
Well, I don't think the first two are going to take that long, so we'll make our guess wait. Been terribly long for that.
Then I think you're good to go.
Good to go. All right, well, let's get to it. Item number four, I'll turn it to you, Judy, to give us a quick update on the facilities task force.
Great, I thought it was a great meeting at Pearson. We had everybody there again, of course, people have been great about that.
I'm waiting for something that's to show up, based upon your.
Yeah, really, they were great, you know, and they're very engaged, too, so that's nice to see.
I'm doing.
They did a tour, everybody was impressed by the condition of the building. Doesn't look like a building that's suffered from being closed up for a while by any means. Some things people talked about in particular after the tour was a possibility of rentable space, which was something people hadn't talked about before, so that was interesting. It would solve a lot of the issues that are problems at Central. Everything's on one level, more rooms with sinks, larger rooms, more playground space, more parking space. Movement costs would be minimal, depending upon who was going to move in there. But, you know, if we're going to do it for this group or this group, the cost would be minimal, and that surprised me, but I was glad to hear that. It makes things interesting discussion. Then we talked a little bit about some things we're starting to see and that we might be talking about in every meeting, a few meetings, and they talked about we might need to rebalance the middle school.
They brought that up?
They did.
Okay.
And then they wondered about rebalancing the elementaries eventually, so that was a question. Someone brought up that, and I had heard this all the time, too, and I bet if you had sixth graders in the sixth grade center, you heard that, they really liked it. I always heard that. And someone said, maybe it would be a cool thing to make Pearson at some point a fifth grade center. You'd still have a middle school, you'd still have a high school, but you'd have that transition time together when we're all one big group. I thought that was an interesting way to look at things. And we have three more meetings. So, and tomorrow, I guess we're going to get into the nitty gritty talking a little bit. So, anybody else?
No, I think that pretty much hits everything. You know, I guess I was a little surprised as well that the building, if we had like a natural disaster, a fire, or something that, to one of our elementary schools that we currently have, that we could pick up and leave into that building very quickly if we needed it. Very minimal work would need to be done to get students in there tomorrow. So that's, that was very positive. I mean, it was, kudos to our custodial staff. I mean, the building looks fantastic. It doesn't look like it's going to sit in there for a long period of time.
How many students does that building hold if, if it was that capacity?
Depends what configuration.
That's true.
It was about 600 they set for an elementary, maybe pushing 700 for a secondary building because of the way it's used differently.
And Julie was at the Pearson tours while she hadn't been in the building, so she was very curious as to what it looked like and how it could potentially work for her programs, so it was great to get her feedback as well.
She seemed to like the lab. Especially the wind level.
Yes.
The more of the green space, the easier to drop off.
Parking, yeah. Okay.
Good.
So three more meetings, and we're still on track for the plan as it's been laid out.
That's right.
Okay. So I've just been reminded I jumped a little too fast. I guess we do actually both take motion on the agenda, because we're going to possibly take action tonight if you do that, so just quickly running back, let me take a motion to accept the agenda presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, Stephanie Christie, no further discussion. All those in favor, say a kind of a say a hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. All right, so thank you, Judy, for that update. Actually, I should make a little do it all over.
Chair, it's prerogative, that's what's going to order. All right, keep going.
Let's do, move into item five, a couple of discussion items. This one is a survey discussion. Ash, why don't you come on up?
Ashley, are you all right? If I say a couple names before it's done here? This, this is an idea, and this has come up at a variety of different places, a communication committee, and maybe perhaps at a board retreat, other places, even the facilities task force where people go, all right, we know about open enrollment in and out of the district. Hey, why, why do people choose, you know, who are residents of our district, choose to attend other places? And so Ashley's been working on, and I've been working with her, so, to just sort of start down that path of, hey, if we were trying to reach out to folks and get some answers, who are, you know, who are residents of our district, choosing to attend school outside of our district, how would we get that information? And so this is just simply an idea, starting down the tracks. The questions are, do we continue down the track? And really looking for some discussions, some feedback, some direction. We've tentatively got it on the agenda for the school board communication agenda, to get feedback from tonight and continue on. But it is, it will look like, and this is credit to Ashley, you know, when she puts things together, it looks like a finished product, but it's a draft. It is a very, very early draft that can be altered, changed, and that was, that's the goal for this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Bear with me if I start coughing, I've come down with something, sore throat, in the past few hours, so, all right. Yes, as Mike mentioned, tonight is, yes, tonight the focus is really to discuss what we've done so far, our thinking, to get feedback from all of you, and to find out if we are heading in the right direction. So the information that we have available at this point includes names of students who live in our district but are choosing to enroll elsewhere. The information we have available, their names, addresses, and/or emails. In some cases, we only have mailing addresses, in some cases, we have both. It's really difficult to maintain information on students who are not in our district. And the information that we have available is as of 2019 to 2020 school year, so it's the most current information that we have at our fingertips. And the information also tells us the school that the student is currently attending and the last school that the student attended in the 2018-19 school year. In some cases, the list includes students who have always attended elsewhere, out of our district. The list is more than about 2,300, but when you consider.
2,300?
Yes. When you consider duplicates and, and names of students that we don't have any information for, whether it's no mailing address or no email, that list decreases to 1,317 households. So that's what we're working with, with, at the, with as of this moment. And that number could increase. I've been in talks with our system administrator, Michelle Carpenter, who is, who I'm working with to pull the information, and some of the students who we don't have information for right now, she is reaching out to the districts they currently attend to see what information we can pull, so it's possible that number will increase. But as of today, it's 1,317. So as I mentioned, for some students, we have email addresses, other students, we only have a mailing address, so we really have two options. The first option would be to send an email asking families to complete a survey. If we only have their mailing address, of course, we would have to mail a letter to those families asking them to go online, complete the survey. We're proposing that the survey be conducted via Survey Monkey. We already have a school district account. It's very easy to go in, type in the questions, receive the responses anonymously, that way. That way, information that we receive, it will remain confidential. We're proposing, back up a little bit, we're proposing that this survey be conducted every year to include the new names that are added to the list. So every year, if names are added to the list, we would send the same survey request to those new families.
To the new ones.
New families only, yes. We propose that the survey include three open-ended questions. Again, part tonight is to discuss, receive your feedback, so if that's going in a different direction, or you have different thoughts about that, definitely open to receiving your, your feedback. But this is where we are at this point. Question number one, what was the primary reason you decided to leave Shakopee Public Schools? Question number two, is there something Shakopee Public Schools could have done differently that would have impacted your decision-making in such a way that your child would be attending Shakopee Public Schools? Question number three, Shakopee School District is always seeking ways to serve our students and community better. Do you have any suggestions as to how we can improve our services? So the next steps would be to continue discussing this with the school board communications committee. Christie, you have scheduled a meeting for October 23rd, so from there, we can discuss this with the committee, work to finalize questions, and determine when we would send out this survey, via email, or by, again, mailing a letter.
Have we thought yet who, since they're open questions, which I think is good, I think that's the best way to go, have we thought about who will compile something or read responses, or, you know, what, what are we going to do with these open-ended responses?
I think that would be a great thing for the school board communications committee to dive into and look at, and then decide the best way to bring that to the school board.
Sounds good.
Because it would be a lot of responses if everyone.
We hope.
Yes.
That's exactly what we hope for.
We could get 10%, that's 131.
Every piece of feedback's a gift.
Right.
So my question, compared to open-ended questions, open-ended questions concern me a little bit, just are there themes that we have heard, reasons why they leave the district? Like teaching in different districts, so that's why our children aren't here, or we live closer to Pride Lake, so we're going to take our children there because it's closer to home. I'm wondering if we should have some sort of response for them to just click on versus leaving it open-ended for them to write a book, and then have, at the end of that question, have another where they can add in additional feedback, just to make it go a little bit quicker for the user?
Because I think there probably are hundreds of those, like private school or homeschool charter schools.
And it would be easier to decipher the information, to analyze it in the end as well, versus reading through, you know, potentially 1,300 responses. And 131 is a lot to decipher and try and figure out from a categorical standpoint. And three questions, I'm not, if we're going to go after them and try to understand why they've left the district, is three questions enough? If we have a captive audience, should we be trying to ask five or six? I don't know what the number is, but obviously, we don't want them to spend 20 minutes taking our survey, because then they won't do it. But if we can keep it under 10, I think that it's attainable.
Do you know if neighboring districts do this?
Other neighboring, yes.
Can we steal their questions?
We could steal their questions, or we could look at their questions and see if they work best for our district. Everyone has their own way of doing it, depending on what they result is. But it's something we can continue exploring before, again, finalizing the questions.
I think a minimal number is a good idea when I, you know, every time you like talk to your cellphone company or whomever, and they ask you to take a survey, when I hear that it's three questions, I say yes. If I don't hear that, I don't do it.
Yeah, I would tend to agree that the more is, the fewer questions, the more likely we want to get completion. I like the idea, especially for question one, having seven click all that apply, and if somebody clicks five or six, well, we've broken it, you know, our work cut out, with an other, and then maybe a comments box for people to expound. I don't know two and three, if there are ways to kind of provide categoricals, they both seem to me to be more narrative-based, but maybe I'm reading that wrong. But I think for one, that would greatly help in analyzing the response, if we can, here's a, here's a bar chart, right? This is number one, this is number two.
I think this is a great opportunity to gather as much feedback as we can get.
Definitely.
Some people are going elsewhere. Absolutely, we want to hear from everybody, but this is a key audience, and I guess I dare more to the sides of getting them to complete the survey than turning them off with risking turning them off, but that's just my thoughts.
I agree, I think less is more, but I do like the, the concept of having some choices to pick, and then not making the three questions required, or maybe one of them required, so that way it's faster for them, if, if they need it to be done.
Well, I would think that question one is, if it was like going to a religion school, they're not necessarily going to need to answer two and three, because that's why they're going to those schools, is just for religious reasons. There's no need to answer the other two.
Really, in proximity, like those, all those other reasons that were outlined, if you've clicked on that, that's archaic, if you're saying.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, the other reason why I, I think that three and three isn't enough is because if we're going to only do this once, here's our opportunity to gather more information. I guess that's my feedback, or reason why I would want to do one.
Well, that, that actually may be something that could be examined as well. I know you said you'd add the new people, that makes sense. No, no reason to ask the same family five years in a row. However, I think it might make sense to do it every three years or something, if it's a student who has been gone since kindergarten, and they're still gone in third grade, I think you could revisit it. So it may not be the only chance, with your point notwithstanding, I think it's a good one. But I wouldn't look at that with a frequency, at least consider it, but not every year for everybody.
Right.
I don't think there's a downside to this, and I think we'll probably learn as we do it. So to Christie's point, I think you make a very good point about the first question in particular, let's make it easy, you know, toggles, and they just check the primary reason or all apply, whatever you want to do. And then you have a couple of open-ended, that's going to take some deciphering, but we'll learn from that, and that's all the points we're going to learn. So I, I get the sense that if we want to do it, let's not overthink it too much, but let's try to get as much good information as we can.
And I think if we can see maybe what other districts are doing, as just an example, we love that we have copy questions, but just, you know, they're asking.
Can you contact your peers and just say, hey, what are you guys doing? They'll shoot, you guys share that kind of stuff, right? Okay. That'd be interesting, and you can maybe bring that.
Yeah, to the guy. Yeah. Great, great dialogue, great feedback, exactly what we want.
You got kind of a directive ahead there? Everybody good at that?
Thank you.
Hope you feel better.
Yeah.
Please stay away from me.
I need to see what's for everyone.
You can't, you said.
Bring that wig off, I'm gonna brush.
Good luck. All right, let's move on to item 5.2. Got the UNESCO folks, Jeff, come on down. We've got a fairly sided deck here. I wouldn't assume that we, you know, prioritize it all, but at the same time, it's a sided deck, so use a little discretion, maybe just through this.
Yeah.
Through it expediently. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll just introduce UNESCO group. So we sent down an RMP, these guys responded, we want to bring them in and, and look at a guaranteed energy efficiency program for the district. We'll ask the board to, I guess we fielded through this meeting, we'll ask the board to approve at the end of ICO. So I know that, I presented some information to the board of finance, Kevin, I think you guys were there at the facilities committee, so you have a little bit of an understanding of how this works. But we wanted to go into a little more detail, so Kevin's got a 45 slide presentation. We'll try to hurry, get done by 9:30.
We'd appreciate it.
It's the only, first night of my.
So I, I'll let you go.
Thank you, appreciate it. A pleasure, and we will go through expediently, and we'll be able to kind of hammer through some of that deck. Again, just as a reminder, I've been before some of you, not before others. My name is Kevin McGauley, I'm one of the principals of UNESCO. With me this evening is Brett Hezen, he's a professional engineer, he led some of our development efforts, and then we've got Perry Schmidt, who is, I'm going to call it, an energy efficiency specialist, works a lot with finance in the state of Minnesota. So I'll, they'll be available for some questions. Brett will make some comments as we'll get to the scope of work as well. Are you okay, just for, well, can we ask a question or two as we go along? Please do, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'll, I'll hold it against you then. No, I can take off. That's our fun, yeah. So, you know, tonight, I thought we would briefly talk a little bit about what an energy efficiency project is, you know, how does it relate to the overall objective of maintaining the facilities here at the district? What specifically are some of the scope of work items that we've identified to be funded through this mechanism, and then, and how does that funding mechanism work? We'll talk about those types of things. Again, the next steps would be to seek your authorization, your formal authorization at your next, at your next business board. Just as a little background, again, we've been engaged with the district now since a little over a year ago, back in May of 2018. We were first engaged to study energy optimization, then when that engagement expanded to, we were looking a little bit more at more of a long-range facilities initiative. We've reviewed very iteratively with staff administration to identify the highest priority, and we'll talk about how we, how we went through that process, the highest priority improvement, so that we're spending taxpayers' dollars on the, on the highest priority facility maintenance needs. And then, again, we, you approved an LTFM, which is short for Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan at the end of July, so you're seeking, seeking those resources in that process. Again, this is just a quick snippet of what are literally hundreds of items. This happens to illustrate Pearson Elementary, the facility you talked about this evening, and some of the improvements that are needed, and then how we went about the process of prioritizing those. And to the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see categories of the items, a short descriptor, we have, we've delivered to the district a much longer report that has much more detailed information about what each of these improvements are. It talks about what the existing conditions of the systems we are currently, and what those solutions to some of those facility needs might be. On estimated cost, we went through and we described to them how we, we developed what we call a rough order of magnitude budget for that work. Again, we're a professional services provider, so we actually won't be doing the work, but we would be doing the designing and the oversight of that work. And then, again, a little bit, to the, further to the right, where it says prioritization, a little bit more about the process that we used, a very objective, you know, I'll call it qualitative and quantitative approach to identifying which are the highest priority items. What we did, after we went through that process and going through literally every item that we found throughout the district, we were able to summarize that, five being the highest priority, with one and zero being the lowest priority, and you could see of all the deferred maintenance needs, kind of what, where the, where they kind of fell into at each individual facility, and five being highest priority. And then what we've also done is we've worked with the district, and we put this into an online database, and we've created some dashboards for, to be used by board, facility committee, potentially even community members, if you so choose, so that we can see exactly where we'll be spending dollars in the larger facility initiative. So five years out, where we'll be, be spending our LTFM dollars, and in which buildings, and on which priority items. So a lot of effort went into this, I provide that as a background, that there is a much larger initiative to maintain the district's facilities. Overall, there's, there's roughly $80 million worth of outstanding deferred maintenance items, and, and again, this is a very strategic, tactful approach to, to identify and address those issues, and hopefully spending dollars, taxpayer dollars, on the highest priority needs at all times. So how does the energy efficiency program relate, and really what are some of the things to be considered? First of all, it is an integral component of the facility maintenance initiative, not only to optimize the, the systems, but we are going to be funding potentially some things that cannot be funded through the state statute, the LTFM statute. So specifically, again, this is, this is a comprehensive list of how we can fund facility improvements in the state of Minnesota, and in particular, I want to draw your attention to 123B 595, otherwise known as the LTFM, or Long-Term Facility Maintenance Levy. And there specifically, there are, it, it, there's two different components to it. There's something called regular revenue, and you've been using this funding mechanism. It's, it's $380 per student, per pupil unit. It generates roughly $2.7 million of revenue in fiscal year 2019. That could go down a little bit, it's a complicated formula, because we're bringing some new square footage online, but in 2019, that represented roughly $2.7 million. There are 15 categories of eligible expense, I'll touch on that, and, and we're going to find out today that we're going to be funding some of those items that are not eligible under that plan. Then there's something also called the large projects, LTFM. It's, it's also a board of approval, meaning that the board has levy authority over that. It's for specific things like hazardous materials, life safety systems, and indoor air quality, those projects that are over $100,000. It's kind of a one-time special levy authority that you would have. So kind of breaking that down, again, into those 15 categories, it's things like physical hazards, asbestos removal, fire safety, essentially, long-term facility maintenance is to be used for, to prevent the continuing deterioration of buildings. It's not, it's not intended to necessarily improve buildings, so I can't add square footage with it. I'm really not entitled to remodel classrooms, those sorts of things, so I can't improve the spaces, but I can maintain them and to prevent the future deterioration. And it's very clear that it can't be used for general maintenance. So if I wanted to change air filters in an HVAC system, that would not be an eligible expense. One of the eligible, and it's not to be used for anything relating to energy efficiency. So lighting systems, as an example, it's very specific that that's not an eligible LTFM expense. Well, and again, we did, we talked a little bit more about the statutes and the guidelines, and we're very familiar with those, and we wanted to make sure that, again, that we are compliant with, with these particular statutes. I just dropped a couple out of these, just again, for reference. And specifically, LTFM funds cannot be used for energy efficiency programs and projects, and that would be things like how control systems are, building automation systems, lighting systems, and so forth. So again, maybe kind of drawing upon that, I guess I probably had a couple more slides I was unprepared for as I, again, again, it's not to be used for planned maintenance or scheduled maintenance as well. So some of the things, we actually drew out of the LTFM plan, again, we had hundreds of items that kind of found their way into that database, into that 80-plus million dollars, and what I've done here, probably easier for you to read in your board pack. I'm going to interrupt real quick, just because there's a number we had heard in the past, and it wasn't eight, we heard 53. How do we jump from 53 to 80? And I don't know, look at you or Jeff or whoever. Yeah, yeah. It's. Go ahead.
Well, it's based on prioritization, so priorities one through three, or the higher priorities, and that was at 53 million. So a lot of the other stuff was out there quite a ways, it just didn't.
Okay, what else? Want to leave anyone with any questions? We got this $80 million hanging over our head, what we got to do tomorrow? That's not the case. That's soup to nuts from something that can be deferred a long time, I'm assuming, to things that need to be done soon. Precisely correct, and when we say deferred a long time, you know, 10-plus years, so, so roughly $30 million of that $80 million, in our opinion, our professional opinion, we can defer that more than 10 years. And that's why we're dealing, when you, with the number you've heard is accurate, those are the numbers that we're kind of using within the tenure program. That's helpful. Yeah, appreciate that, thank you.
And if we were to pass this, what would that do to the individuals' taxes?
Go ahead and say that.
Yeah, we're, we'll get into the funding a little bit later. We're not required, we're not required to go out and do a vote for, to do this program, so maybe later for doing some LTFM bonds, but again, it won't require a vote. But tonight, we're just looking at the energy efficiency program, so that gets funded based on the energy, from the energy savings that, that we generate. So no vote required, should have no impact on, on our, on our town district taxes.
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but I think the answer to Paul's question is what they're going to talk about tonight specifically is funding is neutral. It's funded by the savings. Yes, it's funded by, this is funded by operational savings, and does not involve tax dollars. When we do talk about the larger program strategically, again, it was very, working very carefully with facility initiatives like the, the task force that you're currently engaged with, with the operating levies that you're considering, and also with, you know, with the LTFM program. The idea is to manage tax rates to maintain a neutral status.
Okay.
And so what I've done is pull out of that, that larger plan, those items that cannot be funded, that are not eligible to be funded, so these, these same items are going to find their way into a future slide, these are going to be scope of work items for the program that we're discussing this evening, which kind of brings us to our next topic, which is the scope of work. I'm just going to have Brett say a couple things about it.
Sure, thanks. So as part of our facilities. So as part of our facilities assessment, going through the district, going through all the buildings, looking at the conditions of the, of the systems, we also identified these energy optimization opportunities, and they include optimizing the operation and performance of various building systems. It includes improving comfort and quality of the learning environment, and it also includes reducing energy consumption and costs that go along with energy. So these are, this is broken down, as you can see on the, it's pretty small print on your, in your pack, packet, but some of the opportunities that we identified were lighting, you know, converting to LED, lighting mini diodes, which are roughly 50%, use 50% less energy than the current fluorescent lighting. There's recommission of controls. Over time, controls start to drift from their original set points. So pointing back through the systems, you can improve efficiency, you can improve the performance of the equipment by recommissioning and recalibrating components like transducers and sensors and actuators and whatnot. So additional opportunities that we identify, and one specific one was some, some controls in the high school. I know there was some question about the, the controls in the older part of the school, and that has had a lot of complaints and issues to do with the fact that the new system and the new addition doesn't communicate, communicate very well with the older control system. Nothing new. That happens a lot. Technology changes, now it doesn't work as well with the old technology. And so that's one of the improvements, is upgrading those older controls for the 2007 part of the high school. There's items like variable speed drives that would be incorporated, also used to affect the performance of equipment during periods where there's low, low, low heating and cooling loads, and you're not providing as much air through the buildings. So a couple other real quick things, destrification fans, pool cup for swimming pools to, to reduce energy. So this, this table pretty much has everything that is included and included by schools. There's, there's a bunch of other slides that are probably in your book, but I'm not going to go through all that. I'll save you the pain of having to listen to me talk about the details of energy. So.
Yeah, and just one, and to highlight one thing that Brett said, as it relates to the high school, that was a question that was, that was given to us before, that this is not affecting any of the newer areas, those newly added on or remodeled areas, it's the older sections of the high school, and it's not replacing anything that was just recently installed. You know, so this is all, replacing all older technology, less efficient technology, things that were on the LTFM plan. This program, maybe a little bit, to your, to your point, is self-funding. I mean, we're utilizing efficiency savings in the operating budget to, to fund the project. It is budget neutral over up to 15-year timeframe, timeframe of the project, and it has absolutely no tax impact. We're not using any tax dollars whatsoever. So again, maybe the other statute that we're referencing this evening is 123B-65. And again, and one of the ways that we kind of identify the different statutes is, will there be a new tax impact associated with the levy? No, because we're using specifically operational savings. Energy is essentially funding, energy savings are funding this, this improvement. The concept of the overall statute is clear, that if we're currently using, as you can see, the bar, our left bar, if that's our current operational and maintenance expense, if we were able to reduce that through new systems, new technologies, we are able to create savings. Those savings then are used then to offset the debt service payment that we took out a small loan to pay for the, for the initial improvements. We're paying that loan off with the energy savings. We, we show in this graph that there are excess savings, meaning that we don't need as much of the savings to pay for the debt service, so that we are immediately redirecting some of those operational resources back into your general fund to be used at your discretion, potentially for educational purposes. And then after we've paid off that loan over 15 years, all of those savings then can be redirected back into the general fund. Over time, as you can see here, we, we've, we've done an analysis, a two-year analysis of your operating expenses, and we, we, through our process of identifying these savings, again, savings that we will guarantee, we will, we will guarantee that that reduction of $1.3 million to $1.1 million, if we fall short of that, is our responsibility to make up the difference. If you were to extrapolate that over time, you can see that creates a lot of operational savings over time, roughly $10 million of operational savings, and some of which, as you might imagine, will be used to pay off debt service, but some of which will be also directed back into the general fund for, to be used at your discretion. Again, getting, getting a little more specific is how this might operate. This is a, this is a pro forma that shows, again, the inflows and the outflows. As you can see in the far-left-hand columns, those are the savings that we are guaranteeing, and the operational savings. A good example of an operational savings would be lighting. Currently, fluorescent tubes that we have throughout the district, they have a life expectancy of the five-to-seven-year timeframe, and the ballast that they, that are used along with them have a similar life expectancy, whereas LED tubes have life expectancy that's closer to 20 and 30 years. So cost avoidance is something that we call an operational savings. You won't be buying fluorescent tubes now for the term of this project, you know, probably not only, you know, for years to come beyond that as well. Then maybe in the expenses column, that kind of represents the debt service payment that you would find associated with the loan. And then ultimately, per statute, after year 15, the, we are budget neutral over 15 years. So we're going to fund roughly $6.5 million of capital investments, budget neutral over 15 years' time. This also reduces the burden of LTFM resources, so sometimes we find improvements have a better return on investment, and they can pay for themselves faster than in that 15-year timeframe, which is the statutory requirement. And this is certainly true in this case, we are going to fund roughly $1.7 million of things that don't have energy benefit. So we're going to pull them out of the LTFM funding mechanism, which is taxpayer dollar-driven. We're going to pull them over into this program, which is savings-driven. Energy will pay for some of the needed capital improvements. And we've identified those in red, roughly $1.7 million. And again, you can see, as an example, the heist, the theater, the house lighting system in the theater is something that was drawn as a priority item, but again, we're able to fund that through excess energy savings over this timeframe. And again, we've identified those items in red, those things that aren't necessarily energy-related. And then finally, we, again, are, you know, the intent is to reduce the operating and maintenance expense. Again, it's, it's one of the things I already alluded to, that, that we're trying to redirect as much of the, the operating expense that's currently in the mechanical room, things on, things like utilities and maintenance, and redirect that back into the general fund. So this is very, it's, it's good stewardship in that sense, good stewardship of the general fund. In terms of next steps, again, the administration, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the administration, is recommending that you approve this program. It is an integral component of your larger initiative. It self-funds over 15 years. It funds ineligible LTFM components. It will reduce the burden on your LTFM tax dollars by 1.7 million, which might funding some things that don't necessarily have an energy benefit. And again, will create energy, general fund savings over time. And again, I believe, again, they're requesting your authorization to, the Energy Efficiency Program.
I have a question about the, the utility cost. Have you used any kind of really increase in the amount of, the cost of utilities into this proposal?
Yeah, Perry wants to speak on.
Yeah, in the cash flow, we escalate the savings by 3.75%. And if you look historically, electric is probably, you know, 5%, 6%. Gas fluctuates a little bit more, so we've inflated those savings by 0.0375% per year.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Got to do that very quickly. I appreciate that. I have a few, but I want to throw it over to the group first.
I want to understand the guarantee.
Yes.
So the guarantee isn't that.
Go back to the cash flow slide, because that's my question. Just a little, that's where I'm going to follow.
So again, it's your question, how does the guarantee work?
Well, yeah, I've got something specific on this, but to start with, just, we've heard the term.
Yep.
I think we've got to understand that very clearly. It's a word we like, but we want to understand it.
So statutorily, in order to do these energy efficiency projects, the companies like ours, a professional services provider, is required to provide a written guarantee that the savings will meet the debt service over the 15-year period. So that means that over 15 years, the project has the cash flow, and this project does do that. And so what we do is provide an annual reconciliation, we're monitoring your utility costs on a monthly basis, but then annually, we're required to sit down with you and provide a reconciliation. And so what takes place is if, in the first year, we come up, say, $1,000 short, you have the option to, one, have a check written up to us to, to make up that shortfall, or two, the contract's written, where we can go in at our expense and do some additional energy efficiency improvements to generate that additional savings, so that we don't have to cover that shortfall. And that's at our expense, not at your expense, but we have the, you know, opportunity to go in and do some more tests, if you will, to mitigate that shortfall, so we don't have that shortfall in future years.
That's helpful. So on this particular slide, I think I understand the utility savings column pretty well, although that's based upon projections, right?
Calculations.
Calculations, okay.
Yep.
The reality is, they can be wrong.
Absolutely.
And so what you're saying is if year two was, the savings was, to use your example, $256,079, and that's the $1,000 difference that you would make up, or have the option to do something else, just so I understand.
Correct.
Correct. It's the next column that you kind of lost me a little bit. You talked about the lack of needing to replace something. That, to me, sounds a little more theoretical. It doesn't, how do you quantify that column? Because how do you know when that, like, that particular fluorescent light is going to go out? How do you quantify that column?
Lighting, again, is a good example. So what we've done is looked at your, your historical operating costs.
Okay.
And, and so we look at all the different vendors and suppliers that you've paid over the last couple of years, and what those expenses were. And we know that we will warranty the lighting for the term of the agreement, and that's the easiest one. We can talk about some of the other operational savings that make that up, but we know what you've been paying for lamps and ballasts for the last two years, and we've taken an average of that.
But could those not have been episodic? And I know you say you're taking an average, but it could have been front-loaded, and so now we're not going to recognize those savings in the future? Or it could have been, we didn't, it happens to fall in 2021 in our kind of overall plan or expectation for replacing something, and it was affected, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, and when you, you know, for most of them, if there's any outliers, we didn't include those. And so when you look at the lighting, usually there's some consistency, you know, amount of failure that goes year after year. Same thing with, you know, maintaining temperature controls, you know, bringing in and doing some repairs on the temperature control systems. You know, what we've done in the past is, we've taken a two-year average with all of our clients, that seems to be relatively representative, but then if there are some outliers. So as an example, if you're spending $10,000, and you have lamps and ballast, and you have $100,000 a year, we, you know, we kick that out, because that's an outlier. But if you see historically that it's relatively the same amount of operating costs, you know, that's, and the other thing that's important is, we're only guaranteeing those operational savings that are legitimate budget-reducing savings. So sometimes we're asked, well, you know, if there's labor savings, because Ed's going to be more efficient, he's not going to have to work on lighting, stuff like that, we don't take into consideration any labor savings. So only hard costs that you've written out checks for, that are discernible by seeing actual invoices that you paid.
And your documentation, because you answered my question, that was also asked in terms of, in terms of adjudication, this, the oversight.
Yep.
When you come back to the board, or you come back to the Jeff or the Eds of the world with this report, how, I don't mind, in other words, it's that, that's the column I'm really questioning. I think it's pretty easy to say, you spent this much on electric, this much on gas, et cetera. That column, do you break it down for us and say, this is how we quantify the $70,200?
Yep. Well, first of all, we're going to show you how we quantify that number, but then each and every year, we've got to go back and look at your operating costs and determine, you know, did you buy some additional bulbs? Well, you shouldn't have, because other than when we're done with the lighting retrofit, we're going to provide an inventory for you.
Yeah.
Just in case, again, they're warranty, but so that you're not calling us up and saying, hey, you know, we did have an LED bulb go out. So we're going to provide you some inventory. So it's going to be pretty easy for us to follow up on that particular lighting, because you shouldn't be buying any lighting, because we've replaced and standardized on all LED lights throughout the district.
That seems pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Other questions?
Yeah, what's the cost difference between the fluorescent lights, ballons, ballaces, and?
LED.
LED.
Yeah. An idea of the cost, Brett?
You're talking install cost, the product cost?
Product cost.
Right now, the price of LED has come down quite a bit. It's probably, it's probably just under double the price of a fluorescent lamp. But if you look at the life and the cost of life, you know, fluorescent lamps, you can't just throw away, they have to be recycled, so you have to pay for that cost. LEDs, you can throw them in the garbage. You don't have to.
And then you have to put that in the ballast, too. So what's kind of nice is just from an operation and maintenance standpoint, now if a bulb goes out, you know, you probably have to replace the bulb and the ballast. There's no more ballast. So those black box that are up in the ceiling, all of those get replaced. So there's electronic drivers that drive the LED. So you're getting rid of not only the balls, but you're also getting rid of the ballast. So you won't have any, you know, ballast left in the district for the most part.
Okay. That's right.
Yeah, of course, can I, you know, one of the things we're doing is we're trying to use our facilities more if we're ready, right? Leasing the fieldhouse, leasing gyms, whatnot. Is there any usage requirement of, like, for lights, that there's certain numbers where we're dark, we're not allowed to have the lights on if we sign up for this?
Nope. So we use some trend loggers, and then we inventory all the staff to determine, you know, the hours of operation that you're maintaining. So we haven't made any adjustments. You know, when you think back a long time ago, when there's talk about energy conservation, that meant sacrifice, right? You know, you have to turn down the temperature, you have to, you know, have the lights out. That, that's not the case anymore. The technology's gotten to the point where, through the control systems, we can operate the buildings through occupancy sensors, so we know when, you know, kids or students are in the spaces. So we're just using the same hours of operation that you're currently doing. And then the other thing that's pretty important is that when we guarantee these savings, we're not guaranteeing 100% of what we're calculating. We put a safety factor on. Lighting, you know, we usually use a safety factor of about 5%, so not a whole lot, but that gives us some wiggle room, so if some classrooms need to run longer than what they normally have, or if you're going to do all weekend, where you're going to run 24, you know, some party or something like that, you know, we're not going to come back and say, hey, you exceeded the hours of operation. So what, putting that safety factor in, you know, that gives us enough wiggle room to know that we can still meet the guarantee, you guys can, you know, operate your buildings week to week.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of where, where that'd be concerning, right? Is we run a basketball tournament, or something, you know, something that does go late, we need to, in the morning, and we need more heat, we need, you know, because we're having success bringing in revenue, bringing people in to use the facility, we don't want to trigger something where all of a sudden it's, now we're out of compliance with what we're going to do here.
Yeah. Same question.
If you look at lighting, you're actually going to just increase savings, because you're using more. Then if you don't install a LED, and you do still have to operate longer hours, so.
Other questions?
How many schools or districts participate in a program like this?
You know, in Minnesota, we've probably done 75, and that's just our company. And there's, you know, other companies that have done this, so.
Nearly every district has done one of these programs.
Yeah.
And this district, they actually did one in 2012, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah. I was following to Christie, because I was hitting on that path as well. What can you share with us about your track record, if you will? I mean, you're in this as a business, so if you're thriving, then you must be doing something right. Having said that, what can you share with us to show, we've been doing this for 75 districts, and we've been spot-on, 67 times out of 75, or 69, or whatever?
Today, we have not written out a shortfall check, but I think more importantly, we've never had a contested measurement verification report where we said, hey, you know, here where we said, hey, you know, here are the savings here with calculation. And we'd meet in our guarantee where a customer said, you know, that doesn't seem right because, you know, some anomaly with their utility bill. So most importantly, we've never written out a check. But in addition to that, we've never had a contested where somebody disagreed with our measurement verification report. And part of it is though, we're probably one of the few companies that puts a safety factor in because we do want to avoid those situations. And it's not just writing out a check. No company wants to have to do that. But nobody wants the bad publicity that comes with writing a short round check and then having a contested relationship. So we'd rather, you know, if there are more savings, you could theoretically afford a bigger project. We'd rather play it conservatively and do something that we know is going to meet, you know, what we projected. And that way it's when, you know, it's unhappy situation for you guys, it's when you're, us making a guarantee.
What's the timeframe for that, never written the check, 75 projects? Is this 20 years, is this 5 years?
Yeah, 97, go back to my question.
Did they ever had you go ahead and do the modifications of, you know, writing the check?
We have done that on a few occasions.
Good question.
Is it the same wiggle room, your trend in kind of light usage column, the column for temperature settings in buildings?
Yep, well, let us say, lighting is pretty straight cut. You know, if your burn, if your hours of operation are pretty consistent, you know, that's pretty straightforward. With heating and cooling, there's a little more variability. So our safety factors on that are closer to 15 to 20%. And for that reason, so, you know, if somebody wants our classroom at 74 versus 72, we want you. You know, again, we're not looking for any sacrificing of the burning environments to generate the savings. So by having a higher safety factor on, you know, the thermal and the cooling, then we, you know, we've got the ability to do that. We've got enough safety factor built into our accounts.
Yeah, it comes, our modeling accounts for the weather like we had last weekend in October, when normally it should be 30 degrees warmer. So our model builds that into, into the factor because it looks at historical, what they call bin data, and which is over 30-year average. So that those anomalies are compatible.
Yeah, what I hear you saying, I don't know what the words are, but the heat settings that we're currently using aren't changing in future years. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I'm not making it up on cold roof.
61 degrees is great for that. I was thinking 50.
Keep that up for like for a while. I would think that, I would hope this hasn't been happening, but let's play the scenario. What is the category, how does the lumber building? How does that impact the agreement? You know, we obviously have to replace the structure or fix it or fire whatever tornado. What happens to the agreement in that situation and have you had that happen?
We have not had it happen.
Good.
You would still be obligated to continue with your payments. Because, you know, it's a third party, it's going to be certificates of participation or tax, again, municipal lease. You'd be obligated to, you know, to make those payments. You know, I don't know if I have a good answer for you because.
I'm wondering, is it a shared risk? Or because in that case, let's just say it's one of the buildings that had 20% of the savings.
Yeah.
And those savings aren't being able to be recognized at this point.
Yeah.
Are you still on the hook for that or are we a shared risk for what happens?
Well, we can't be on the hook because we can't be responsible for, you know, catastrophic events like that that take place.
Guarantee has an asterisk.
Well, I mean, if the building's not there.
This is what we've got to think about.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
And if you haven't had it happen, good. But I suppose it could.
Yeah.
And it's just we have to understand that apparently without putting words in your mouth, if that were to happen, payments continue, we understand that, but the savings may not be there to offset the payments.
And just to maybe play off of that a little bit, one of the things that we've done with a lot of our clients is, you know, where we see risk with the guarantee is probably in the first couple of years. Maybe for sure the first year, the second year, maybe the third. Once we've met that and got a cadence going, typically those savings will, you know, materialize year after year. So we do have probably 50% of our clients that cancel the measurement verification portion of the guarantee. So they're willing to take that risk on because then they don't have to pay us, you know, to do the measurement verification report. So 50% because they're seeing the savings, they're seeing, because that measurement verification is like a service contract.
How much is it up there, 15,000? You hear that number, 15,000?
15,500, which is built into the cash flow.
Okay.
Yep. But, yeah, a lot of our clients opt out because they just don't, you know, see it as necessary for us to tell you, yeah, you're still seeing your savings. So again, I think that offers some legitimacy that those savings do materialize. Now, that probably doesn't answer your question of if the building's gone or portioned.
Well, the building's gone. I was just, I was just thinking through that. I'm sure, I'm sure there, I know there's language in the terms and conditions, but you're not spending any money on utilities then. So you have more than enough. You'll be dealing with insurance claims and so forth, and you're trying to figure out where students go and so forth. But you'll have more than enough money to make a payment. Yeah, how do we, how do we, like, if the building's not there for five years left in the term of the contract, yeah, how do we reconcile that? Let us, let's, let's take that, let's table that one, we'll parking lot that one. We'll see how the Ts and Cs, we've used the same contract, like, you know, again, with well over 100 districts throughout the upper Midwest, you know, 50, 60, 75 of them here, right in Minnesota. The lawyers probably have that figured out. I just don't know that I've ever been asked that question before. That's a great question.
Or even from the standpoint of selling the building.
Right, there's another, there's another good question there, yeah. So back to something you just said, so in this cash flow analysis, it looks like, I interpreted your statement right, you actually built in the elimination of the, what'd you call it, adjudication, but.
Measurement verification.
Verification.
Yep.
You actually took that out. So theoretically, if we wanted to continue that, I'm not saying we would, but if we did, that's another 15,000 for 10 more years or whatever.
That's okay.
Okay, that's fine. And is it the kind of thing you could do episodically? Could you do it in year five, in year seven, in year 12? You wouldn't have to redo the years in between.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
That's right.
If this is a loan over the, that's being replaced, repaid over 15 years, it seems over 15 years, there's going to be something entirely different that schools should be doing to save money with electrical and the heating and everything else.
You know, possibly, you know, you had done an energy project a handful of years ago and now LED came out. You know, LED, we've probably done, you know, with some of our customers, two and three different lighting retrofits, which is a little bit surprising. You'd think the technology would probably have reached its pinnacle. You know, some thoughts are now that, you know, with LED, I mean, I don't know how much more efficient lighting, you know, can get. But, you know, I think that's some of the value that we bring as we continue relationships with customers. If there's new technology that comes about that can save you even more energy than what's already, you know, that we're guaranteeing. I think if you come in to provide that, you know, information to you, you can decide if it's a worthwhile investment based on, you know, return on investment and the payback. But we'll continue to provide those opportunities to you, those technology changes.
Other question. Does the plan include, for lack of a better term, all the installation costs? So this isn't Ed's team having to retrofit all the lighting? Is this, that's all built in? And if we were, sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, kind of that hypothetical, and I'm thinking of that community facilities task force and, you know, if another building, if a Pearson came online, I mean, there's some costs now, but if it were used day in, day out, or if another building went offline, how does that get calculated? And, you know, how is, I guess, how are those contingencies? Maybe they're not calculated in at all. How do you deal with that? You know, it's a little different than losing a building.
It's a fact, though. And you swap.
Kind of.
So, you know, we expect that buildings do change over time, right? You know, they're going to reconfigure and so forth. What we're doing is just saying, the way you operate today, if you continue to operate that way going forward, these are the savings that you're going to realize based on the improvements that we do. We know there's going to be changes. And if you continue that measurement verification for more than three years, and you do some remodeling or some maybe addition to a building, we just want to calculate what that vote is and what that change is and be able to adjust our, you know, guarantee and our saving calculations accordingly.
That's what.
My question was, if we decide to do this and we push play, how soon can this be implemented? What's the implementation timeframe before, you know, what is year zero versus year one in terms of timeframe?
Yep, you know, a project of this size, we'd estimate about a year's worth of construction. A lot of the work is done behind the scenes in the mechanical rooms. The lighting, we do on split shifts after hours, you know, so we built that in. Some of the work would take place next summer. Now, there's also some LTFM work that you might be doing. We'd want to make sure that we dealt with that. So we'd evaluate what's going to be done next summer as part of your plan and make sure any of this would kind of co-mingle with that to make sure we're not duplicating any others. But, you know, I'd say 12 months of construction.
Question about, I noticed the slide about the older original doors, right? Some that are quite old. We've worked at the same architecture 30, 25 years, a long time. Would they have you say in the design so that the look and feel is consistent with the rest of the district? Or is it basically you guys come in, bring?
No, we're going to work with Ed and his team. I'm sure he'll be consulting with the architects. So yeah, absolute continuity between the work that you've done previous time.
There's certain standards that they have to meet for our value and whatnot.
Precisely right. Other comments? So we're not taking action tonight. I'm sure that there's a lot of meat to consider. But I applaud that. I mean, that's detailed stuff and tough part questions, we kind of get into weeds sometimes. So we're going to take the next two weeks, of course, to this agenda. To consider the thought is Jeff, you'd be asking us to take action. The recommendation is to prove it at the next meeting. Okay, everybody comfortable? That doesn't mean we're asking any opinions tonight. It's just, you got a chance to digest this, think about it, maybe think of additional questions that you can bring. I don't know if you guys need to hear your question through Jeff.
Sure.
In the interim, can we do that as well, please? Have a burning question? Okay, we'll fund those to Jeff. Does that sound like a plan? All right, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's move on to the next meaty topic, item number six. And Dave, I think you can probably lead us through this.
And he has exactly 31 minutes, no more, no less?
Yes. Is that what that 31 minutes?
You got a small buster if you end early.
I thought there was a ranking somewhere. 31?
Okay, so I'm going to start with some of the slides that you've seen before, kind of as a review. It's the why are we having this conversation? And so you'll see the trend in enrollment and you'll see that difference between our two middle schools that were junior highs for the majority of this. And when we look further, we see that that difference in the size of the two schools is projected to continue to grow a little bit and kind of stabilize in that mid 400 range. And we had, this projection was done based on end of year numbers. And it was projected at 372 for this year. We're actually at about 427 as of this slide. So this you've seen before. So I'm going to go through that. This was kind of a summary of the why part. We basically use a feeder model. Later I'll show you that it's not a perfect model, but the majority of kids from our different schools go to either east or west middle school. And our two smaller elementary schools right now primarily feed into east. Our three larger feed into west, and that's kind of what's caused that difference. And there's some other challenges that that difference creates. And I just did those there as well. This is all kind of review. This is the timeline that we're looking at. We talked extensively about this a couple of weeks ago, I think that was. And we have, we're going to have information at our conference sites at each of our elementary and middle schools. And then we will have two public forums, October 29th and November 7th, with a plan to come back to the board on November 18th with feedback that we received through kind of all our outreach and anything that we got from the public via email or contact directly or feedback cards or information at these meetings.
Are we going to have something that we hand out at the conferences?
There'll be an information table at each of the.
There will be an information table at all of our conferences. And we are encouraging people to send emails. Since it's at conferences and someone will necessarily be stationed at each table, we're afraid if we have the cards, they could get lost. But at the input sessions where those will be fully staffed at east and west, we will have input cards or cards that people can write and provide feedback.
But will there be something for them to take away? What will they get at the table?
There will be a one-page report with information. There will also be a presentation that you showed tonight that has all of the information. And we'll also have a Q and A.
And we do have, I mean, Jim's here tonight representing the middle schools as well. And so he's going to be hanging around that table as well, right, Jim?
Got it, Jim.
Okay, good?
Yeah, I'm going to be at those tables, a couple of them, several of them, so I know what I'm supposed to do.
So actually, hold on, let me dovetail on that. Because it was the follow, and the graphics are probably the thing that a lot of people are interested in, the maps. Are we going to have those? And I'm not looking to incur a real expense here, but maybe repurpose them, some kind of poster board or something?
We will have enlarged poster boards at the conference nights at east and west. And also the listening and input sessions that are also at east and west. We will not have the enlarged boards at the elevators.
What are we going to then perhaps be able to post this? So someone could go online and see it. I think that's going to be where people may zero in, where am I, does this affect me?
We will have Dave's presentation as well as the scenario map posted online. And also at our elementary parent teacher conference nights, we will have this presentation that he shared tonight printed. And copies will be available.
And I believe you'll have that lookup tool that you've had in the past.
We will, once we get through here tonight, we'll talk to the guy at K12 about creating the lookup tool for future scenarios.
And how many of us are planning on being at these tables?
I don't know what people signed up for, but it's probably, probably give as many as are, I'm assuming, yes.
Okay.
I'm sure there's some.
We'll do as many as we can.
My schedule just opened up exponentially last week. So I, you know, followed the hash in terms of what's total in terms of it.
Yeah, I didn't sign up for anything, but I'm willing to go and handle them as long as they're not the first week of the month.
All right.
This is also review. This was the criteria that has been used in the past by the board as well. Just making clear that there isn't a priority. We were put, pressed to identify which is most important, and they're all important. Probably the capacity would be one. I mean, we wouldn't be having that conversation if we weren't there. This you've seen before as well. This is a listing of developments that we're aware of in the district and kind of their status. And then the first five columns indicate where each of these developments would land based on current attendance for areas for the elementary, for the middle schools, and then three scenarios, which are number 106, 107, and 108. We also got some feedback last time that our numbering system caused some people to think one was preferred over another. So we're just using the generated ID numbers from the software.
Okay, are we still going with the pre-10 set? If a student has gone to west for sixth and seventh grade, they can, they have the option stack for eighth grade?
We're going to talk about that at the end here.
Okay.
Okay, so this is review. Okay, just to get you, here's how it's going to go. This is a map where you'll see kind of dots that represent our students in east and west. This is our current reality. Then there's just a clean version of it. And then there's one with the overlay of those, where those developments would be. And then just popped in a couple that have just started getting talked about, okay? Okay, again, this is data presented in ways you've seen it before, where what's the current population? What's the capacity, percent full and open seats?
Did we pause there?
Yep.
So I think that's really important. If you look at west, we had said 110% of capacity. And we'll refer back to these and then the open seats. And then even if you look at the categories at the upper right, for me, if you look at free and reduced lunch is that first column, that percentage slash R, that's a pretty big difference.
It is a big difference. And when I saw that, I was even more behind this whole idea because if you look at anything like statewide testing or anything that evaluates kids, free and reduced lunch, kids from poverty is a huge issue in education.
And the negative 108 open seats really jumps out at you, yeah, where west is underneath over capacity.
And if the developments on that list were fully built out, that could project another 107 students at west and 59 degrees.
That's if we did nothing.
We did nothing.
It actually gets worse, just the projection.
And we have no idea of knowing how long it takes to fully build those up, but that's the doing that. This is new information, and so I want to explain this a little bit. So this is, I asked our data people, it's nice to have them to do this poll, where our current sixth graders at each school came from. So I'll use Eagle Creek as an example. There were 127 fifth graders there last year that are now in our middle schools. Of those 127, 106 are at west and 21 are at east. So Eagle Creek already has that kind of split that we're talking about kind of creating. 152 Jackson fifth graders from last year. 146 of them are now sixth graders at west and six are at east. Do you under, you see how to read that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can see certainly Red Oak, 92%. Sun Path, the majority. Sweeney, only three kids. It's also possible that those three kids are kids that we moved for programming purposes. Okay? This, I'm going to say, hold off on looking at this as well because you've seen this before. Well, this just is that one of your projection. This one we put on here, and want to be clear, this is not one of the proposed scenarios. Not a proposal, but showing it because we believe this is kind of a starting point that people will ask us about.
Sure they will.
Okay?
Yeah, and I was going to say, I've seen Dave's presentation. I interject in certain places. This has become our presentation. And it should be, but one of the things, if you remember last time, we mocked up a lot of things and even one of them slid it east-west along 160, just to see. I think we've arrived at the conclusion. I think we've arrived at the conclusion, I'm not gonna say it's 100, you know, it's not proven, but it seems, if you look north of 169, I don't know anybody doing attendance areas that would not draw the line north of 169, north and south splitting east and west middle school. Seems pretty reasonable, right?
Right.
You wouldn't have the line on either side of those schools. Once you do that, then you start going, all right, well, what do we do? You've drawn that line, well, the first thing that we thought was, well, let's just take Marshall Avenue, it's the one contiguous main thoroughfare between those two schools. Well, let's run it north and south from the very north end of the district to the very south end of the district, and just see what happens as a starting point. But that's part of the why.
Okay, good. Same idea, you get that same look of where that developments would be then, and what that would do. So you can look at, it actually does a pretty good job on the student counts. The demographics probably don't wind up where we want them ideally. And then you can see where the development would be, it shifts primarily to east.
Dave, would you flip that development off once? I think that's the only place moving forward in the proposals where you have the development data kind of projected in. All the other numbers, the tables are rolled forward without projected development?
Yeah, only in this table at the top of each one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just, I've seen this a few times, I think it's interesting. So that's kind of the projected data, the others are gonna be a lot of rolling forward of our numbers today.
And then this is also new information, so I wanted to explain how this works. This you can probably, this is where we project the fifth graders at each of these schools would go in the scenario. So Eagle Creek would be, have 86 of their kids go to east and 45 to west. Jackson, Red Oak still primarily would feed into east, Sun Path primarily into east, Sweeney primarily into west still. Is this not a proposal?
Really good.
Okay, you got the idea. Okay, and I'll talk more about that other box. This is that rolling forward, and you can look at all the tables if you want, but basically this is without any development, and it's taking each of those younger grades and rolling them forward. So you start to see how this works. The 303 from east jumps over here, or the 303 from these elementary schools become the sixth graders, and then you roll them to seventh grade, you roll them to eighth grade. So you kind of see that all along, how that works. And then you can see what the difference between the two schools is. Okay? All right, so now here's a real proposal. This is number 106. So it uses kind of that same idea of starting with that north-south split between east and west, and then bumps out just below 169 there on 17, and then valid view to the south and...
Independence.
Independence to the...
North and south.
Yeah, north and south. And if you remember before, we had looked at, I think it was Williams and Cardinal or Sullivan, that really splits that neighborhood more than north and south, and the dependence is a major thoroughfare.
Hey Dave, if you could just go back a little bit to the dots. Are all the walkers, are all the kids, the purple dots, north and east, are they all walkers?
I don't know where that walker line is.
Yeah, we haven't drawn that.
'Cause we're over about two blocks from Marshall, right?
Right, right, couple of blocks.
Okay. Is that a real road or just?
It's part of a road, it's part of multiple roads, it's part of, you know where the city work stuff, it kind of runs through there.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
So we're trying not to, you know, split right through a neighbor, but you know, like through people's backyards, but it's not perfect, it does, you've got some apartment buildings like just south of the city work, so it does kind of go through there, but even you have some forward, you know, buildings on, I think it's, it would be the west side of that where the buildings face west, well, the line runs through the backyard of them, but they tend to focus to the west, so it made some sense. But again, there's, it's not gonna be, none of the boundaries will be perfect, I mean, they always separate something, their boundaries.
Now, what does this proposal do to the demographic?
Here, I'll show, thank you. This is the numbers for that.
Pretty close. Oh wow, almost perfect.
Wow. And then, again, if those developments were to go the way they are, it puts the two schools fairly close. So there's some logic in that, in having east start a little smaller in this, because it's gonna be more developed there.
Always, you know, we're gonna have a decent cushion for each school.
Yeah.
Okay, and then start, I do, one of the places where we could, people will have questions, I wanna explain this a little bit now. There are current seventh graders at east, there would be 81 of them in this scenario that would switch to west. Current seventh graders at west, there's 150 of them that would switch to east. So you have a pretty decent number of kids that would change, and we'll get more into that question that you asked, Paul, you put out having those kids finish where they were and what the implications are of that in a couple minutes, okay?
I guess I got misled, I misled myself by thinking about that's 450 kids at west being disrupted, it's really not, 'cause the 156 in fifth grade right now, they have no ownership of west other than their older siblings.
Correct, correct. And I should tell, well, no, not even that, here's how, the way I did this, and it wasn't perfect, so I just, I took all the kids that were at Eagle Creek, Jackson, or Sweeney that would have gone to west that are now going, that would go to east.
But it's hypothetical, it's not, they didn't start at west, so probably just talking about 280 plus 150 going from east to west, so 430 is a lot more powerful than the 600.
They're thrown in the other, yeah.
I might have brought that.
Yes.
Joe, Angela, help me.
I understand what you're, yes, they're new to a middle school, it'll be their first year.
Yeah, they're kind of a sunk cost, 'cause they're going somewhere next year.
And you can see the distribution, really, all our schools have some kids going to east, okay? There's the long-term look, that difference box.
Oh wow.
Okay, 107, changes the northern boundary of that kind of kicked-out area up to 169, and moves the southern north-south line over to the west, and I don't even think, is that 79?
Tunnel line road.
Tunnel.
And then it, when you get sold the related projection on a road there, but it geographically connects with the southern tip of the district that you want.
Might host them down.
We're getting down there. It also moves just one development from east to west at Sarah's and Platts, right now what we have on there is switch. There's your statistics for 107.
Still, I mean, that's still exceptional, right? Don't have a 4200.
Okay, I'm gonna just keep, well, ahead here, there's the development. And there's the long-term.
So we're thinking this is quite as durable, and that the year six went from 22 to 34, still very recent, right? It's still, we'd be thrilled if it held up though.
Oh, it'd be great. And here's the last one that we're putting out there, and I think this one's really similar to 107.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out geography, what changed?
Up north.
Oh yeah, okay.
We get a little bit of shift to try to get them...
Try to tighten the balance in some of the categories.
Especially the north side of that.
So, yeah, it's a very slight change, and the schools start out at almost the same size.
But you see what it does on that slide in upper right part of the slide, it puts them a little more in balance.
So without putting words without Dave, 107, 108 are pretty similar.
Correct.
106 is pretty similar.
I mean, they're all...
Right, I'm assuming how we want to proceed, but if you wanted to get this down, it kind of may be 107, 108 are gonna both be.
It could. It's a little easier to look at than it was with six different areas.
Yeah.
And you can see there what the development is.
Oh yeah. The same stuff.
Have you looked at all the bussy for these scenarios?
I met with the bus company last week and looked at all of these, and they had no problem. They had one question about one of those non-road splits, but they, they said these are fine.
Yeah, well, the good thing with having these schools pretty much next to each other, it's not like it's going to cause much to move.
And it would impact number of roads?
Might be slightly more, in fact, because we're not scattered.
Didn't seem to fix it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, 'cause one of the things you should do is give like current number of walkers, and then you make this change, not what your other walkers say no more. And I'm assuming with real schools, there's not gonna be a big change in that number of walkers.
And 108 has the biggest sway by the end of year six, twice what 107 is, but it's still a very manageable number.
Yeah, if we were there right now, we wouldn't be here right now.
Thank you, can we look at that direction?
I'm sorry.
67 kid difference between east and west.
Kind of put some of those subgroup categories more in balance right away, but the drawback would be that, yep, over time, if development happens as projected, it has a little more sway in terms of the total at home over time.
107.
Wider gap beginning, and it's much better by year six, assuming.
Exactly. And that's where those value judgments kind of come in, and it's impossible to predict.
Okay, I'm gonna, based on Paul's question, I am gonna do this slide. Was this slide in your package?
No.
Okay, so you're gonna bear with me again here, okay? There's, there's four types of kids in this example. Kids that were at east that stay at east, at east switch to west, at west stay at west, at west switch to east, four types, okay?
Include the fifth graders, are you including the ones that haven't been there yet?
Nope, I'm, let's just, I only want to simplify, I only want to talk about one grade, seventh grader.
There you go, okay.
Four, one of four things happens to them.
So kids who've been in the school for two years?
Or are just seventh graders right now, they could be, they're there. There's 242 seventh graders at east, there's 403 seventh graders at west in this, and I'm not even, I might have done this, this is not tied to one of the specific examples here, but it's very similar, okay? In this example, 162 of them would go to east, 80 of them would go to west, okay? Of these 403, 158 would switch to east, 245 would stay at west. So here, here's the scenario, stay where you were, stay where you were, change, okay? These 158 go to east, and with the 162 that stayed there, you'd have 320 kids there, get it, you'd have 325 at west. But here's the issue that you wanna think through. If these 158 said, you know what, I wanna finish my career at west where I started, I put them back in here, I back up to 403, I took them out of here, so they're down to 162. Then I have these 80 kids that were at east and switched to west and said, you know what, actually, I wanna stay here. So I could go from this 325 to add the 158 back in, or sorry, I can go to where I was, add these guys back in, add these guys back in, and you're at 483 fifth, sorry, eighth graders at west, and 162 at east.
So it doesn't need to work.
It probably wouldn't happen that way, but it's, and it could happen the exact same way, the kids could say they want us all go back to east and the other kids want to stay there. So we could wind up with this discrepancy really wide, still, after doing this work. That's assuming, it could be even, what could contribute to this even more is depending what we wanna do with siblings. If we said we wanted siblings to be able to go along with their eighth grade sibling, we could, by making this choice, make the work that we did to try to balance this moot in effect like that.
I think what Dave's trying to share is, you know, we're trying to figure that out. There's a, I think, you know, my heart goes, hey, that is school for two years, it makes, yeah, it'd be nice to have that option and finish. But what he's also put up would be the worst-case scenario, which is good to consider, that one way you could end up, if everybody chose to go to east, you know, that all the seventh graders who were, you know, had been there, you'd have 400 students at east, 225 at west, really imbalanced eighth grade, and vice versa, if all that were eligible to go to west in that type of setting went to west, you'd have 483 at west, 162 at east. So there's a potential for, at least for one year, if it were just the seventh graders going to eighth grade, you could have significant imbalance by, by offering that choice, but that might, you know, it's an option, it's certainly worth contemplating.
So which is the disruption down the road?
I think last, last meeting we discussed the option thing, you know, you know, say kids go out, go into west for two years, and little brother, little sister starts going to middle school next year, and would be sent to east. Now, if you wanna keep them together, then the seventh grader would have to go to east.
Do we know how many fifth graders have siblings in seventh grade? Or, I don't know that. Or sixth grade, right?
Or sixth, that's an excellent question.
Yeah. You'd wanna know the sixth graders too, right?
Sure. But if the seventh graders are given the option for eighth, it'd be easy to know how many of those fifth graders are going to the sixth, that they're siblings. I would think that we should be able to get that information.
Then again, we can't.
We can get that.
Letting them stay at west hypothetically, then we run into a kind of a busing conundrum.
Yeah, would we be providing transport or not for the people who would essentially be open and rolling to the other school?
Well, what we talked about was, Jeff, here there we talked, running a shuttle between, you'd just ride your regular attendance area bus, and then it could shuttle you if that's what we decided to do, which Jerry's, that's not gonna be a deal at all.
I think these are the topics that we've gotta make decisions around, there's no perfect plan.
And if somehow that landslide wanted to stay at west and the ones coming from east wanted to go there, that 400 kids, how far above capacity would we be at west? And it's, it's a one-year problem, so I don't want to have it manageable, but would we be really at risk of, you know, I know there's been 1,400 kids in that building in the past, so we've done it, but...
It depends what we decided to do to Paul's, and Joe, what we decided to do with siblings.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause that would, so to this point, here, here was some very general language around intra-district transfers.
Sorry, I was gonna try to segue into, you know, the other thing, you could make the change, just make the boundary, you know, the attendance area changes, and then allow the opportunity for those who wanted to do intra-district transfers, similar to what we've done previously, or maybe with some modifications.
So a modification might be that we put a hard deadline on making the request. The hard deadline combined with something that says, once a building hits 95% of its capacity, we're done. Or once the difference in the schools is more than X, we're done, or we'll let you go within 50 of your, your published capacity. So when west hit 1,017 or east hit 994, we're done. So we could look at something like that. We could say it's with a deadline with one of these or some other type of parameter, where they're within 5% of each other, whatever you wanted it to be, and... And we say, I take, we take all the ones that we get by a certain deadline. We do the math, we see if it meets our parameters and we say the name. Or we have this rule and it doesn't work and we do some sort of lottery. We pull them out. Not, not in the order they were received because that would create a bad house and maybe something that might not be as fair. Do some kind of drawing or lottery. So we have some options here. I don't know what the, the best way or the right way to do this is, but...
My opinion, first come, first served.
But there's a balance with, for you to reduce for lunch and everything else, that we have to maintain the percentages to be.
Yeah, but wouldn't that just be a one-year problem?
Perhaps.
It depends how long people have been. It is just seventh graders that work on those sections.
It depends what rules to be put in place.
So was the intention of having the fifth grader go with a sibling, they would stay there the whole three years? Or do they have to go back to their originators? That wouldn't make sense.
Um, no. Okay, so my suggestion would be, okay, you've got Johnny, he's a seventh grader at west. Little brother Joey is a fifth grader. But they live in a section that would be migrating from west to east. If Johnny wants to stay at west, fine, but if the parents want them to be together, then they would both have to go to east.
I like the idea of just kind of what you were saying, make the change and then take the application. If a parent chooses to pursue that, that can be considered through the application process, right? As opposed to us making a lot of parameters and rules and guidelines. That kind of feels like we're over-engineering things and let's just kind of see what the individual parents and then empower Dave, Dave's team, whomever, you know, to make the right decisions. That, that'd be my preference, would be the less rules and more smart people making smart decisions.
And the shuttle between two buildings, are you... I, I don't know if I like that idea. Kids getting brought to one building and then they're gonna get put on a different bus and then brought to...
Okay, don't do that, though, then you have to run buses.
Oh, I totally get that. And I know some districts do run shuttles like that.
I think our consideration was mostly for the, the one-year eighth graders would be the shuttle. So that'd be a one-year, most likely be phased out.
Easier before school than after school because you have to be on the bus after school and get over there. The delay, the buses, I mean, they're gonna have to sit there for twenty minutes, ten minutes until they can leave.
Probably faster to walk the bus.
Yeah, probably would be.
Well, so Dave, the math looks incredibly impressive, so thank you to you and everybody who was involved because wow, these are three proposals that I think are exceeding any expectations I had. I don't know if anybody else.
They're great.
They're, they're all three winners and we, you know, so now we have the object of choosing the best of them, so thank you.
So we will go out with those three and get feedback and see if there's something we missed.
So I'm, I'm actually not there. I'm not there and that is presupposed that anyone's going to agree with me. But I think 107, if I had the numbers right, 108 are pretty near identical, other than that little bit to the north. And if you look at the two, I think 107 statistically looks a little better than 108. I have no idea about binary and A and B.
A and B.
Probably most of the opposition, if anyone's gonna have it, it's gonna be the, I don't want to move. So that's gonna happen all.
Right.
So I think narrowing this to 106 and 107, which are, there is a difference in terms of the geography. Helps to narrow that and focus it. I'm not sure what we gain by six, seven, and eight.
I'm, I'll, I, I agree with Reggie. It's, it's so minimal.
Right.
The difference between 107 and 108.
Reggie, I'm not sure we found better.
Why, I was just gonna say, why, why do you like 107 better than 108? Because I agree with you, I think 106 should be one of the...
Well, I had to, I'm trying to flip between the pages and I think it was because the, the difference is worse, if that's the right term to use.
It's, it's durable.
The, the demographics are awfully close. It might be a little better than latter one, but they're awfully close. I think it's actually a couple students fewer that are moving in seven versus eight. That's my point. Seven and eight are so close together that I, I don't see a difference between the two, really. So pick one of them, maybe it's eight, not seven. Six is certainly different and then one of the other two.
And year four through six were both about, they're all, were all three years, they're about sixty-eight students. Forty-six with 107, we're all on fifty.
Right. That's one of the reasons why I like, that's why I like 107. Of the, of the two, again, that's just my reaction, saying, well, sometimes too many choices is, is just, you're just asking for more confusion.
I agree that they're so similar that there's no need to offer both of them. Pick one.
Okay, now my other point was gonna be, I'm trying to kind of follow the discussion a minute ago. It relates to your current slide, Dave, and we don't know what's gonna happen relative to the scenarios we talked about. The number of kids are saying, look, I've been here for two years, I want them to stay. You can't predict that, but we have to know that, here's the extremes. It seems like we have to, though, as part of this process, identify the rules that we're gonna follow. We don't know how it's gonna play out.
Right.
But I like what you put up here, which is saying, we're gonna allow some, I think you should. But the parameters we're gonna use is X and Y, or X, or A, and B, and C, or whatever they are. Not knowing how it's gonna play out, but this is the rules we're gonna play by. I think as a board, we have to identify that as part of the process too. It can't just be 106, 107. I think we have to have some stake in the ground. People can understand, oh, you're, you're gonna give me a chance to, under these criteria. Do you see what I'm saying? I feel like we have to have some insight on that also before the feedback. We might adapt based upon feedback, but I think we need to have that element too.
I like the way Dave put, you're talking about the capacity considerations and, yeah, I mean, I like the way you threw out some options there. I, one and three kind of feel like the same thing, right? One's a percentage, one's a hard number. But you're coming up with a couple ideas that are as guiding principles and then letting the administrators make the decision.
Well, hav- having listened, it's okay to offer a suggestion and in some ways combines it. I think if we're doing work to balance the enrollment, I think you can honor a lot of things using, you know, or we would, and I think having an application deadline. We don't wanna, you know, I, I hear you saying, you don't want to do all this work to balance and then see it thrown, you know, way out of balance. So if we were to allow a five percent difference, if we took the total of all the middle school kids, a five percent difference between the schools, which is approximately, you could be imbalanced by up to about a hundred students either direction. So one school could be a hundred grader than the other. That seems like a reasonable cap, if you will. And have a deadline. If you get more, more applicants that would put that beyond the five percent or the hundred in one direction, you do some form of a lottery at, at that cap and we could work on some of those details. But it would be a way to honor that, it would be a way to honor the balance. You could let it play out. Just one suggestion to kind of, you know, bring some of these together that we've kicked around a little bit.
One question there. Is that just a one-year process to transition or is that a durable process? It's gonna be that way every year? I'm not opposed to either. I'm just, I'd like to know where our guiding principles are.
I would like to see it last more than a year, just we need consistency. And if we're gonna change this every two years, then that's not good either.
No.
Right.
And what I like about it, when we use capacity, that can fluctuate and you could have large imbalances, yeah.
What I mean is...
Yeah, no, I...
No, I didn't, so I didn't understand. She's looking at me because I have this puzzle.
So what I mean is...
I often look at...
I just suppose me.
As a district, as a district, we need consistency with what our principles and our guiding, guidelines are gonna be for things like this. And we can't be changing it so frequently that people are confused, well, I don't know, the process used to be this and oh, now it's two years later and you changed it to this. And unless there is a significant change that would cause us to make a change to those guidelines.
I, I do not disagree at all. I was interpreting it differently, which is, we've been talking about, I think Paul's always brought this up. We've got the seventh graders who've been there for two years and want to finish it out. That makes perfect sense to me. I get that. The line that, that I'm mentally thinking about is saying, that's who we're talking about, the seventh graders. Not fifth, not sixth, because the sixth grader would have two years still in the new building. So I don't see the need then to continue it. It's like, we have to draw a line someplace. We're not gonna make everybody happy. We know that. That's just the nature of the piece. So if you, if you put this inter-school transfer, it's for a year and it's really driven by, maybe totally, but really driven by the seventh graders. Because that way, if we keep, if we allow the fifth and the sixth to do it, then we're perpetuating the shuttle. We're perpetuating the imbalance. It's just, I feel like we gotta draw a line.
But I think that if we only have to use and follow these guidelines pretty strictly for one year, but we still have it in place in case we need it?
We're saying the same thing. I think the criteria is the same, but I, I feel like we shouldn't open the door for that even being on the table for year two because we resolve it in year one. It's really focused on the kids who've been, it's, it's what we get in high school. The kids, the fact that they've been there for two years makes perfect sense why they want to continue. But I think we draw a line and say it's not for the fifth and sixth graders.
I think we would still get some inter-district requests.
So that's how we figure out how to handle those as outliers and one-offs. But not, okay, we're gonna recommission the project, not recommission. We're gonna reinstitute the, the deadline and all that and let everybody do it again the, the following year. I don't, I don't know what we gained there.
And Reggie, I guess I thought that was a way of doing, you know, we, how we currently do inter-district transfers is space available up to capacity, which...
So in other words, we continue what we've been doing.
But I guess what I was suggesting was locking it into, you can't, you can't be imbalanced by more than a hundred.
I feel like we're violating the agreement. We're saying the same thing.
But with no transportation. I think you're talking about shuttles. That's what I was getting to.
That's what I'm trying to say. You don't continue that.
Yeah, and I guess I was suggesting we might not even start with that.
I don't know about that, but...
Yeah, I don't either.
You know, really, you know, any seventh grader who wants to stay there, I don't know that we need the mini-bus in between the two. That's a choice they're making. We're accommodating them. They may have to accommodate their choice.
Which is what we've done with inter-district transfers to this point, is they provide their own transportation. But I'm not saying I...
I happen to like the shuttle idea for a year, just because we're instituting this change upon them. And it would, it facilitates the, I don't know if it's perfect or not, but I just feel like that's, that's a pretty happy medium, but I would continue it.
I'm thinking about Joe's point. I think it's a good one. The buses are there waiting. Kids get on the shuttle. The buses over here have to stay there until the shuttle comes. The buses over here have to stay. That seems like...
Well, it's a one-year thing. It's not dreadful, but...
I don't know, it's, it's truly a, there's two sides because you're helping the kids that you're making this change upon. The other is, look, that's the way schools work and we gotta be balanced. We can't perpetuate this, so we drew the line. I don't know the better answer, but my point is, I feel like we've got to have some of that somewhat fleshed out because that's gonna be driving a lot of the feedback we would get.
I would think that if you did not do the shuttle, you'd have less recourse.
True.
That's probably true.
That's... You create, you also create something that's not fair to someone who...
That's true.
Yeah.
Some kids can't get the transportation, some can't.
Yep.
So you're, you're, actually, I appreciate the, you're realizing how hard this, how this issue is here. We all...
So Bloomington's is November.
They, they give a four-week window. You want it, this is, I just popped this one up. We, we called a number of different districts. Bloomington's was pretty strict. It was November first to November twenty-ninth in the year prior. If you don't get it in during that, we know you're pretty much out of luck.
We can move to something like that. Obviously, we can't start that way because it's, the calendar wasn't consulted. But I think having a rigid process is appropriate. It's fair.
And it allows us to staff our buildings once we know the streets are going where and the pictures.
Go to, but I still think that applies into January or whatever was you were suggesting. That's the parameters we need to put.
You, you said something that I want to know where you're at on this. Because we could go back and we could, we could say, here's a locked-in proposal, like I could do that. But you said something that I want to understand where the board is at on this. Seventh grade has the choice. Fifth and sixth, you go to the school where your attendance area is in year one. After that, we'll go back to our, whatever our regular rules become. But seventh graders, you're the only ones who have the option. Is that what you're saying?
I don't think that's, I think we're saying they would still have to go through a process. Seventh grade is the only year where we'd be offering the shuttle for courtesy sake. Because if somebody wants to keep going to the school they're at, we'd still consider if both of our buildings are under capacity.
Or it's a, or it's a stepwise approach where it's, it's you take seventh grade transfers first. And if you got capacity, then you step down to the sixth grade request for transfer. I think the idea of just saying, look, we gotta make a change. And you're gonna have two years in that new building. Yeah, you had one here, but you got two in the new building. That's the way it needs to be. And then you figure out through the normal process for requests for transfer because my dad teaches in that building or whatever. You, you manage it the same as we've always managed. You just treat the seventh grade group different because we're asking them then to effectively change after two years in the building.
I'm curious, Jim, do you have any comments, feedback on our discussion?
Do you have any specific questions?
Just, just in general of what we've kind of come to with the transfers and shuttles and...
I think with the transfers, the longer we let it linger, the longer it's going to linger. I think we're better off, as Reggie says, coming up with some, some steadfast, this is the way it's going to be if we intend to get the schools to balance because I'm sure that there's a sixth grader somewhere that's got a sibling in kindergarten and are we gonna have them, you know, going to west seven years later when realistically there's no reason for it? And I also think that allowing transfers can create different imbalances over time because as was said before, some people have the means and ability to get a ride to school, other kids don't and that can throw off some of your demographic balance that these models appear to achieve. So I, you know, and I, so, yeah, personally, I think what Reggie's saying about coming up with some steadfast, this is the way it needs to be and, and going with it and a couple of years from now, it'll just be the way it's always been.
And I just want to make sure I'm hearing the board well, that it's okay to have, you know, kind of a, we want to sustain the balance to some degree. So to have a cap less than the capacity of the building where we're keeping, that we're, we desire that. And a process and certain, and to consider perhaps a one-year sort of special treatment of current seventh graders who want to continue. And if, if a shuttle were provided, it would be for them, it would be for one year only. And
Yeah.
And then work, and then work on that inter-district transfer process and make sure that the rules, you know, are the same each year moving forward.
So everything you've said, I think is, you said better than I did because that's, I agree with it. The only thing I would add to it is if the, well, we're focused on the seventh grade, we're thinking of arriving. If we find that there just aren't that many requests, I think we should be able to dip lower. And I wouldn't turn the sixth grader away from the shuttle. If they're standing there, it's like, well, that's my point. That's my, so let that happen. Start with the seventh graders and as far as deep as we can go or need to go, we do. And if there's excess capacity, to use that term, you keep going lower on the list for, for the request, but in one year for that shuttle.
And, and knowing that if we have an artificial, you know, kind of a cap in terms of balance, we might not be able to honor all seventh grade requests.
And that's why you have a hard deadline for the, for the application. You just, you just do it. I, I don't know about the lottery. I'm just inclined, if you're gonna take an interest in this, take an interest and get your application in. I, I don't know how else to do it.
Yeah.
Although the person, sorry, to finish my thought, the person who, who got it in in November first and November thirtieth, that's what it is, are treated the same because they're in that window.
They're by the deadline.
Yeah, it's not necessarily the first or the thirtieth.
Whoever needs a deadline.
Yeah.
But the lottery would be if you have more than you can accommodate, submit during that window.
Okay, have a hundred spots, a hundred applicants buy that. Okay. How about in terms of the 107, 108 conundrum?
Not the number, me, I'd go 107.
I would go with 107.
Yeah, with the demographics closer on 108.
That's the one thing I was thinking.
But I think you're talking about...
I know, it's very low.
Minimum, and 107's more durable.
107 is more durable. Agreed. Frank gave the two, I like 106. Hey, well, no, yeah, I think we have both out there, but, yeah, I mean, at least looking at the models, they're...
Hey, so for, clarificate, Mike's got the...
Take quick action on that there.
Yes, well...
No, you're going to say what I was going to say on 106 and 107.
I'll try. So since this is an action, I, what we, what I, help me out there, what I believe we are giving consensus or going to put out there to them, getting consensus on it, is two instead of three, so six and seven, with a desire of stipulating some of these criteria we talked about in a fairly concrete manner as much as we can, focused in the way we did. I don't know if I can reiterate that, but focused on seventh graders with excess capacity going deeper, probably with some idea of shuttle, or we'll explore, we'll commit to, we'll explore a shuttle.
So these are the details to be made?
Yeah, but I think we, some of that, we have to kind of put in the fact sheet so that people kind of understand what their impact on that.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
But I think that's the gist of the criteria. Is that, yeah, I want to kind of look at everybody. If you can then extrapolate that into, you know, tangible, that's what we're talking about.
We can do that.
We'll try. So I'm going to look for a motion to take that action, the action being directing Dave and his team, the administration, to construct that, put that together as far as what's going out in the feedback sessions.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Well?
What other discussion on this topic?
Are we going to be able to see, so the first meetings on the 29th, we have a meeting on the 28th, are we going to be able to see it by then and not before?
We'll send it to you for feedback.
There are conferences.
Because we were not...
Next week are the middle school conferences.
It's close. We just have to pick the specifics.
Yeah. We can get that email though, it'd seem better.
We'll do that.
Yep, we'll do that.
Okay? All those who favor Sig, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We've got a plan. Good job. Matt said it very nicely at the beginning, but thank you, Dave. Thank you, everybody. Sarah, let's touch this.
See how much work this has been.
And this is, this is one of the hardest things boards ever do, because you'd never make everybody happy. What the reality is, I heard Joe say it under a breath a minute ago, doing nothing is not an option. It's just not.
Sure.
All right. Good stuff. Thank you, Dave. We're going to move on to item 7.1, which is the discussion of a board member replacement process. For this process, I'm going to relinquish the chair. It's Judy, just to avoid any influence on D or otherwise that I might have. I'm actually going to step out of the room, and you guys can call me back when you're done with this discussion. Okay?
Sure, Reggie. Go bring your bag.
Reggie, have your call?
Yeah.
All right. So, looking at number seven, and if you've read the materials that were sent, you know that what it is that someone has to fulfill in order to be a member of the board. Let's see, no, that's true. We, first of all, I think we first of all have to decide on what option we're going to choose, and then we can decide on the process, as well as, are we going to all look at the applications if we decide to go that route, or having a subcommittee do it or whatever?
Well, I would, I would first of all like to explore the cost of a special election, because at its core, this is a decision that is made by the voters.
In half, it's been around 15 years.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're definitely the ballpark.
Okay.
And I can look for some numbers.
And I, you know, I think with all of us running on this promise of transparency and fairness, I, I think a special election would be the way to go. I don't think that it's fair to hire somebody just to give them an advantage. That, that to me is very, seems very unethical to me, and it...
I'm going to, for what Paul's, I think, saying is, if we appoint somebody, they have a leg up if they're going to run next year. And really, I would almost, and I know it's in there, if we do appoint somebody, I would, I would want to appoint somebody who's not going to run in 2020, just because as an incumbent, they might have an advantage. Might be a disadvantage, you never know. And I, I don't know if that would decrease the amount of people applying.
But I'm not really sure that they would be running as an incumbent.
Well, it doesn't appear that way.
It doesn't appear that way on the ballot.
It doesn't.
No, but people know who's currently on the board and running for a position.
Well, I guess I, I don't have the same opinion about holding a special election, only because this person's going to be on the board for 12 months. And so the impact that this person is going to make, I mean, we want them to make a huge impact in those 12 months, but it takes time. I mean, we all know, being on the board for the first time, there's a lot to learn. It's a lot of processes, there's a lot of information, how things work. It takes you a year before you're finally kind of feeling comfortable with what's going on. So to spend $15,000 to hold a special election, to appoint somebody for 12 months, I am not for. And I would rather take that $15,000 and spend it on another play at the middle school, or some other, something that we need in the classroom versus appointing somebody for 12 months.
When would the special election take place? March? Fall? February? How many people are going to come on the vote?
There's a lot of time restrictions in terms of, and I'm trying to...
More than 90 days, for sure. More than three months.
From the resignation.
From the vacancy.
So we're talking April 15, maybe?
At the very least.
So then, at that point, then you have to consider, do you, if you wanted to have a special election, do then you just leave the seat vacant until November, when the general election happens?
Always.
Instead of spending the $15,000. I, I don't want to spend any more money on this than we have to.
I agree.
Because I would say that possibly, if you can speak to this, Sarah, $15,000 might be the actual cost, but that probably doesn't count in for time that would be taken from various employees in the district.
Right.
So it's probably considerably higher than 15, if you think of opportunity costs.
And I'll even add onto that 90 days a little bit further, because of the time for resolutions. So I think we're looking at some, something more towards 120 days.
So, you know, I guess I put myself in the situation, when Mary Romansky's position came open, I was one of the applicants, Judy was one of the applicants. There were, how many? 14, was it?
Uh, I don't know if that sounds...
I think there were about 14.
At least that.
And I thought this is a great opportunity to figure, to find out what this is all about. It's a short period of time. I was thinking about running. I ended up running anyway, even though I didn't get selected. But I think sitting in the meetings of how they selected that person was pretty, pretty valid. I, they did, it's kind of like when we selected the facilities, community facilities. We didn't know who the applicants were. We read through the information. We tried to pick out the ones that met the criteria of what we were looking for on the committee, and that's how they got selected. And we didn't know who they were until after we said number six, 12, 18, whatever the numbers were, that we wanted on the committee. So I don't think that having a application process to fill that seat for 12 months is, is an awful thing to do.
You had, you had eight applicants, and it was about blind selection.
But when we first became aware of this, it was phrased by somebody, that's the way we can pick who we want and give them the advantage in the election. So...
It was?
It was.
I did hear that.
I did. I did.
I'm not willing to pay the $15,000 either. I think the process we've done in the past has, has worked, Judy's...
How many times in just like the last 10, 15 years have we had to appoint somebody?
Originally, Reggie was...
Oh, no, he ran for election.
Reggie was, he was...
He was appointed originally in Michael 8.
Yeah.
And obviously you were.
And when he was re-elected, he was not on the board at the time.
He, he didn't get re-elected as an appointed candidate. He lost that election, came back and won two years later. Scott Swanson was appointed when Tony Gonçalves moved out of the district midterm. The, we did have a special election because the timing allowed for it. William Chuckburg resigned midterm in pursuit of mayor's seat. And that was early enough where it was able to get on the ballot, so that's why Tony Pos was elected to a, not a full term.
But he was elected during the regular election.
Because he was, because, yeah, it was able to get on the ballot for November election.
You know, the other thing to think about, if you're thinking that someone gets an advantage by being appointed, that didn't work for Reggie.
True.
And I will say that because of one vote I made in my second meeting here, I got a blocked email sent, all the list of people that would not vote for me in the regular election because of a vote I made in June. So maybe it creates an advantage for that person.
And could be a disadvantage.
And it can be a disadvantage.
But it is a good experience to try to decide if you want to run versus sit in the seat.
So, I, I want to run this. Mike, if you have the answer to this. If we left Reggie's seat vacant for 12 months, what kind of an impact would we potentially have having an even number of people on the board?
Well, I think, and I might, might not be 100% on this, but there are, I think boards in Minnesota have either six or seven members, so I'm familiar. Actually, the board in Goodview had six members. So it is done. Sometimes it's done on purpose. You know, you never end up at 4-3. You have to end up at 4-2, which, you know, so in some places it is done. It can work. I think we've, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. The flip side of that would be, you know, it's one less committee member.
What committees is he on?
I think he's only on finance.
Finance.
Yeah, as chair.
But as chair.
As chair, so.
But there'd be somebody moving up to be the chair, and then that person would probably want a handoff there, you know, so it's...
Yeah. That's why it's less opportunity to miss meetings.
Right. We have to have a quorum.
And we, we did have a very high-profile vote. That was 3 to 3 for a couple of ballots, right? And it was, sorry, I mean...
I'd like to reduce my...
But no, I mean, it was, and it could have cost us a superintendent candidate, because we went to multiple ballots.
I mean, you know, if this was going to be...
We're not hiring superintendents. Sorry, just to be clear.
You know, if Reggie was in year one of a four-year term, a special election might be the way to go, because there is a significant chunk of time. But because there's only 12 months left in his term, I, I just can't see spending the $15,000 for a special election.
So what are the feelings of leaving it vacant then?
Not interested.
Not interested.
I, my feeling on the, I'm leaving it vacant is that really puts those of us that travel for our jobs in a bind where we can't miss. I mean, Matt and I were gone, probably doesn't happen very often, but we were gone at the same times. I was on vacation and you were traveling. I think the work. So that, that's, it makes it more difficult where you almost have to be here. You can't miss.
And there's one less voice at the table. Sorry, please. There's one less voice at the table, and I, I form value. I mean, I, I would support finding somebody with the caveat that they agree that they will not run in 2020. You cannot ask that. You can't, that is not something we can ask, whether they're going to do it or not.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that legally.
No, well, there you go.
I get the point.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, we can't ask that. I don't know that I'd support if we do.
On the flip side of also leaving that seat vacant, it also puts a lot of burden on the rest of us to pick out those committees, even though he may have only been on finance, but there were other liaisons that he was involved in.
He's liaison for three others.
Yep. So I'm already on five committees. I know I can't shoulder another committee right now. What? Seven? Six? Seven? Seven? So there you go.
No, but it is, there is, there is a lot of heavy lifting. I mean, I do value having a seventh voice. I like hearing different perspectives, people of different backgrounds. We learn stuff from each other all the time. And I, I just value the number seven from the, it's an odd number, but also more voices equals...
And it's...
I like the odd number. I do.
It's huge.
It's also concerning that Reggie's been in the district and has been involved for so long. There's a lot of institutions know, well, each time, the summer 31st, that's going to walk.
I don't, I don't know, losing Reggie's voice. I mean, he's, he's prepared and, and it's going to be really hard to replace. Every time he has, there's people out there, I'm listening to his questions he's asking. I'm like, we are going to have to come up with those questions, because they're really good. And if there was one thing that I hope I've learned is like digging in and trying to come up with those questions, because, because he's good at that. He's really good at that. He's, and that's going to be hard to replace.
Am I understanding, Paul, just so I'm really sure, it's mostly your concern about any appointment having an advantage over the election that's around?
I don't necessarily think, and I don't want to speak for you, Paul. Being accountable, I mean, the seven of us are really the only people accountable to the citizens. By appointing somebody, they're not as much unless they run in 2020. You have the perfect vision.
I would have to think that the person that would apply for this would have the intention to run in 2020, for 2020. I just think that it...
Or they may choose not to, because they realize how much work it is.
And there's that.
Because they may want to meet their kids every now and then.
We could lower them down with, why are these people so stupid?
But I thought I heard you say, kind of a trial run was your hope when you applied.
And I still apply.
Yeah, they could be like after three months, well, I mean, what have I done?
And we had, what, nine candidates for, who filed last time?
Eight.
No, no, I mean, filing for elections.
Oh, I was thinking of the vacancy.
There were 10 of us.
There were 10.
So, I mean, one would hope that somebody who was interested 12 months ago would still be interested now. So I'd love to see, you know, and we will see them blind, right, their applications will be blind, or blind us in terms of what their names are. But I'd love to see everybody who's filed to run, apply. It'd be great to hear those voices again.
I agree. Now, if we do, is it going to be a committee picking them, or is it going to be all six of us? Because I'd...
Why don't, why don't we first of all decide what we're going to do, and then we do need to come back to that. You're absolutely right. It should be a committee or all of us together. So I think the first thing, in a minute, I'm going to ask for a motion, and I think that's what I'm supposed to do, to vote on one of those three. Okay? Except I want to make it clear, the choices are leave the seat vacant, fill the seat by appointment, or wait for a special election, not a general election. That's the same as leaving it vacant.
Yeah, that should just say, hold a special election.
Hold a special election. Just so you know what we're voting for.
Or...
So I'll make a motion that we seek to fill the seat by appointment. Is that how we're supposed to do, is that how we should do it?
I think that works fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Would you say it again? I would like to make a motion that we make the decision to fill, fill the seat by appointment.
I'll second that.
Okay, and so discussion.
Can we have this board, the roll call vote, please?
Sure. But first, is there more discussion? All right.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say right now, I'm very torn on it. Leaving the seat vacant doesn't seem like a great option. Because it's just one more voice, especially with committees and everything. It just seems like having seven is better than six.
And we have a lot of work to do.
And we have, we always have a lot of work to do. And being down one is not a way to go through. Holding a special election, if it was free, and as a former election judge, we'd have it in one place. I'll just do it all. I would just, I would think that would be the ideal thing to do. I just, I'd rather see us spend $15,000 on other things. And I get how important it is. I do. And $15,000 isn't much, but again, if you have an election in April, I just, I just wrote April 15.
That's part of the two.
People have other things on their mind. Maybe that might be a great day to just spend their taxes. Who knows who they want, want to, and actually, the 15th, no, the 15th is a...
I think...
It's a Wednesday. We can't do that today. It's a Wednesday, we can't do that today.
I think the $15,000.
I think the $15,000, you're right.
For 12 months.
For not even a month.
Six, seven months.
Six, seven months. But I get Paul's, I get Paul's point. And, and, and I just like. It's just, it's very difficult. Because I don't want to spend the 15 grand, but I also don't want to speak for all the voters of, of the district. So that's, and filling the seat. So let's just say I'm torn. Because I.
So I'll just say, Mike.
We did a great job, the former board did a great job appointing you. Suck up. So tell me why, why tell me why I'm wrong? I know for sure. Though I don't think leaving the seat vacant's an option, I really don't.
To me, the not being able to seat somebody until a quarter, a third of the way into the year is essentially leaving it vacant for two or three months, you know? So it's really only a short opportunity then. The cost, and then the cost, not only the hard cost of the dollars, but the time, the amount of staff time that has to go through. I, I think those are all three reasons why I'm leaning towards filling the seat by appointment.
So time for me to call the question.
That's what I was going to say, I'm hearing that we're.
Okay, roll call.
Any last, any last?
I, you know, I just, I just feel that this is a decision that should not be left up to us. That's my opinion. Opinions vary.
Can I let the call question out? Aldrich? Okay.
The question again.
The question again, right, that's where I was headed. Is to fill the seat by appointment, that's the question. Aldrich?
Damn, I'm in bad order.
What's your last name, Mazur?
Today? I'll say yes.
Christiansen?
Opposed.
McKeon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Passes five to one.
All right, so now we have to go to the next thing, and that is to look at the timeline for appointment. I wonder if, let's see. Oh, so. I think the next thing we have to vote on is recommended action, whether we're going to select, let's see. Okay, do we next have to decide who's going to look at and decide and make the selection? Is it ad hoc or is it the full board? Isn't that what we need to do next?
I think it should be the full board.
Just one sec, let me decide first, not you all decide, is that what we need to do next?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so are we going to do an ad hoc committee, which is what we did for facilities? And when we did that, we brought it back to the board for the board to vote on. So, or are we going to do it as a full board?
I, I would rather that this be the full board that does this. That way, everybody gets their input in equally.
I agree with Paul.
I agree. Last time we did a blind scoring, but people scored independently and then sent to give their rankings to the superintendent, or necessarily send to you to call it.
To the superintendent's office, they were all numbered. It was all blind, no identifying information.
And it was just numbered, right, it wasn't.
Correct.
Yeah, we just sent it to candidate A, where, where we scored them. We used a bit of a unique scoring system. It was a 1-3-9.
Right.
Where your high candidate was, was a not, your highest candidate, it was a way to differentiate. So you didn't get a bunch of people here, it was the ones you really loved, kind of bumbled to the top. We could use a similar scoring method or something like that, but I do believe that the six of us should all have equal say in this process.
Yeah.
I agree.
You say 1-3-9, 1-3-5 would probably be the best.
I know, but the 9.
It was 1-3-9.
Yeah.
So do you think that we need to vote on that we're going to do it as a full board rather than an ad hoc committee? Is that the next step or? So I'm hearing everybody say.
So I have a question about that, though. So didn't you on the last appointment select two people to be interviewed? And then you voted on it? Is that, this could be the same process for this?
Well, that was probably the next, next motion would be whether, but yeah, we did, we wanted to have two. I believe strongly, and I know we've got a lot of events coming up in this time period, but I think that, part of your point about transparency and public accountability, I'd like to see two finalists come forward and have a public interview that is available to be attended by the public.
Definitely.
Yeah, about it, yeah, because these people out there, that's who we work for.
Right.
Could I have a motion that the full board will consider the?
So motion, second.
Okay, discussion?
May I clarify that resolution is, is that on a, in a blind system as we did on?
So as they come in, he'll send them a blacked-out name.
Thank you.
And we will send back, at the end, at the closing date, we will all send in our roster.
And I wonder, as you were talking more about how to, you know, 1-3-9 or whatever, maybe we should decide that once we get the applications.
Yes.
So tonight, the last thing we need to do is what we're doing here right now?
Yeah, we could only get two applicants.
I was going to suggest that we have a timeline. And just to help us, to help us start putting that process together.
So that we vote on that as well.
Well, I want to ask a couple of questions on there.
Okay, well, then I think we're still on the, the whole board is, so we're going to call the question on if the whole board will look at them and figure out the appointment.
Is there, is there preference on roll call or are we fine with that motion?
I think I'm doing it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion passed. So then we have to look at the draft of the timeline, right?
Yeah, and that's the hodgepodge of a lot of things, yeah, if you're okay with me kind of chair. We have scheduled board meetings on October 28th, November 18th, December 9th, and January 8th. The board cannot select the replacement or the appointment of the person to be appointed until after the official resignation date, so January 1st would be the first date the board can do that. However, they can screen applications, narrow a field down. My first question would be, so with the, January 6th is our organizational meeting, would we want to add, you know, the interview of two finalists? It sounds like that's what you want to do for January 6th.
I think, first of all, the number, I strongly prefer two. Does anybody want to see, because you get to three and all of a sudden, two of us falling off of each one, you know? Two makes it a cleaner binary, A-B.
Well, it could be three, three there, two.
True.
Yeah, well, that is, if you have number two and three tied, it's.
I think.
I know, it's.
Something else.
To appoint us.
Yep. Well, you could, yeah, and I guess, sorry, I should have asked the question differently. If we work on this timeline that's here, so January 6th would be the final interview, or the interview of the finalists.
Do we want to put that on the meeting? Yeah.
It is.
What's your preference, I guess?
Well, why can't we interview them on the December, is it 16th?
You can, but you can't select.
Right.
You could. But December 16th was a personnel committee meeting, not a board meeting.
I just saw it.
December 9th is also truth in taxation.
There's no soft meetings in there.
No, no, we could add a meeting day for this purpose.
Was the last interview, was that public?
No, yeah.
It was.
They wanted to pick one candidate.
We could use the November 18th date for some of that, but that's a pretty quick turnaround on applicants.
No, that seems too quick. And it seems too long, where it's, thank you for interviewing, we'll get back to it in seven weeks.
Putting your life.
Or whatever, you know, so.
So then, so then really, using the scheduled meetings, December 9th would be the screening by the full board. And January 6th would be the finalist interviews and selection.
And that still allows us to seat by February 10th?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's a 30-day waiting period for persons who would like to challenge that appointment.
So dumb question, on the 6th, could we do a five to six o'clock interview of potential board candidates? And then 6 o'clock is our meeting and?
Sure. That, that works probably much better just to have it.
Then it's. Call the meeting in order, do that first, and then we'll, yeah. We could certainly start it by.
And does it have to be part of the meeting?
The appointment does.
Right, but the interview process, does that have to be part of our school board meeting?
Not necessarily part of the organizational meeting, but it would be a meet, this will sound, this will sound lawyeristic. It'll be a meeting of the school board because a quorum is present.
Right.
So it's somewhat semantic that, yep, there could be an interview, there could be a meeting for the sole purpose of interviewing the finalists and selecting one.
Right.
And then we could do the org meeting, but that.
So if it doesn't take the full hour, we've got.
We're done then?
We're done with that.
Take a break, start at six.
We can start at six at 6 o'clock, is our regular school board meeting like it always is?
That's fine. So we would schedule a special start time or a special meeting at 5:00 P.M.
So I'll make the motion to approve the outline that Dr. Edman has just put forth of the January 6th will be the interviews and the appointment during the board, the interviews will be a board meeting before the board meeting, and then the org meeting will start at 6:00.
And when is the application deadline?
October 15th through December 6th.
Okay.
Now I have a motion here. Do I have a session? Didn't you make the motion?
Yeah.
Paul, I made the second bit, so we're going to discuss it now.
I have a question about that. So if we have a 5 o'clock meeting, and then we have, we make the decision at the 6 o'clock meeting, is that going to be?
Too quick?
It is too quick.
Is it too quick? And is it too quick and is it a, I don't know, it's a personnel committee type of closed session type of discussion? Or is it?
I don't think you'd have a closed session. And that's why I would say that we get together at 6 for our regular meeting and we discuss it, and we will, what else would happen before we'd select somebody?
The problem is, if it's open to the public, the public would not have any. Their opinions wouldn't matter on it. They wouldn't be able to give back any feedback to us if we have, if we have interviews at 5 and you're voting on somebody at 7.
I don't think so. Boy, we only have one finalist, so we don't really need one. It's a good question.
Yeah, so.
Because the point of having it open is feedback, I would think.
And the January 2nd date is not until the end of the month because of the holidays, am I correct?
And by then, we're already not appointed for 30 more days.
Right.
Yep, and now you're missing the February meeting either way, which is the work session on the 10th. You might make the second one, no, you wouldn't.
I mean, the public gives us feedback. You know, they can communicate out to the board members or the board as a whole with their thoughts, but the decision lies with the six of us, right? We all have to make up our minds.
But they won't have time to give that feedback.
That's what I'm saying, even if they get feedback, we may disregard them, you know? Just because people tell us what they think doesn't mean we're, you know.
Do we need a month and a half for people to apply?
But we still can't appoint anybody until?
I know, but we could have the interviews on December 9th, and I know it's going to be a long meeting anyway, but how, it's very important. Have the interviews December 9th, you have feedback, and, and one of the first votes that we do while we're reorganizing is that vote for the new board member.
The only thing I would say is we're on that 9th.
I know it's truth in taxation.
But would we be ready to have already screened it and invited people to come here and be interviewed? No.
We'd have to cut off the application.
You'd have to cut off the application before December 6th. Do we really need 51 days?
What I was going to say, we're already in essence adding an earlier meeting on January 6th. You could add a meeting on, say, December 16th.
Yeah, December 16th, that's kind of what I was just.
Just say.
Have two meetings.
Three of us already have it on calendars.
Yeah.
Because of personnel.
We have to just for that.
Yep.
Just have the interviews, and then the appointment happens on.
I have, I have.
That gives a month of fe, of public feedback.
And we can do that even though Reggie is still in place.
You just can't select.
You just can't select.
Okay.
We've called a.
So you could even.
He can interview the people, but he can't select.
We can narrow it. Fine, here's my question, say at the, at the organizational meeting, if we select our candidate, then can they be sworn in right away?
No, it's 30 days.
30 days.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 30 days. Now, they can sit in the audience and observe, but they can't vote, can't participate other than.
Well, here's something to.
And they can't join the committees until after the 30 days also.
Something to at least think about.
Yeah, as a member.
30 days is when people can let us know what they think.
That's right.
So do we need?
That's the way you know you would have selected.
No, the 30 days is just to issue a resolution, and I think it's in essence kind of a petition.
Right.
To count.
Well, you collect 5% of votes.
We could have input then.
Yeah, but by then, it's the only reacting, one candidate selected.
Right, yeah.
The good news is if we select on January 6th, the MSBA training is the next week. So that person, I believe, can go through the training without being a sworn in board member.
I don't really see me having that.
But I would almost think anybody, right, exactly, anybody really.
The MSBA process works so hard, it's fighting everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're kind of there on the, we want to add a meeting on the 16th for the purpose of interviewing.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
It's fine.
Okay.
Do we need a formal motion?
I think we do.
I just made it.
I'll second.
All right. So discussion?
I think we have a plan.
All right. All those in favor?
But do we have the date that they have to have? Is it something we did through December 6th that they can apply through?
Yeah, because that gives us.
We still have, we have 10 days, that's good, okay.
We have 10 days to decide on two, how are we going to do that?
Yeah, how, when are we going to decide then?
We can.
At the December 9th meeting.
December 9th meeting.
So get them all by the 6th.
Do on by the 2nd.
How about, how about just November 30th?
Yeah, I was going to say, just cut it off, day 11, November.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that can be done.
So November 29th is a Friday.
All right.
Okay.
What the?
Some people will be Black Friday shopping, some people will be applying.
You want me to, you want me to reiterate?
Well, especially now, December 9th.
You're not working on the 29th, are you?
Yeah. On December 9th is when we will all decide which two to be invited back.
But we could do that.
27, not the 29th, because it's Thanksgiving.
So the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
But we could also do that selection via our independent scoring method that's done, you know? And then we discuss the slate on the 9th, where we confirm who the top two are. We, we're not discussing, debating, we're just sending scores into Dr. Edman or to Sarah, right? So we're not violating open meeting by trying to sway anybody else's vote.
Sure.
So we could skip that step or minimize that step.
And we should not discuss amongst ourselves on candidates that were, Paul and I shouldn't talk about candidate number three. We just.
Well, we, you know, then, then it kind of gives us a chance to say, you know, this is what I really loved about candidate number three. This is what I didn't like so much about four. This is what I didn't like so much about four. One and two, I'm kind of neutral on, you know?
That's what we'd be saying on the 9th.
Yeah.
Right now. After we've done the...
Scoring.
Scoring.
Have you had time to vet the applicants that are without names?
So Sarah, will you wait to send all of the applicants to us, or will you send them as they come in?
In the past, it's been as they come in, but it really is the board's preference.
I prefer as they come in, sooner than all of them on the, you know, time crunch.
And if, if needed, I'll make that motion right now.
Second?
Which motion?
Second, I think, move, but we gift the applications as they come in.
Okay. I don't think we need to do that on the vote.
Okay.
Okay, the summary, and maybe somebody will make a motion on that.
All right, all right.
Yes.
We all have that, so...
We're trying to get the most...
Alright, timeline for candidate applications, which Sarah came will, will orchestrate, October 15th through November 27th at...
4:30.
4:30 P.M. Those will then be, um, shared in a, they'll be blind, applications will be shared with board members for their review prior to the December 9th meeting, at the December 9th meeting. The scoring will be shared, discussion, selection of finalists.
Call the regular meeting.
I have a...
At 6:00?
At the regular board meeting.
At the regular meeting?
Yes, on December 9th.
Thank you.
Um, let me, let me go through all, yeah. We, we've already passed a motion to hold a special board meeting on December 16th at 6:00 P.M., where the finalists will be interviewed. And then, um, January 6th, at the, uh, regular meeting, which is the organizational meeting, a selection will be made of the person to be appointed. I have not stated whether the number of finalists, if you wanted to add that, but that's the timeline now.
Maybe we leave it to see how many candidates come in before we determine that?
Yes, I think so.
I agree.
That's a good idea.
So... So can that be amendment to your motion?
Motion?
That's what I was just... That we made to accept the changes in dates here. So, you're, would you wanna give your motion again?
I don't remember all.
Okay. I need a motion... I need a motion to approve the, um...
Timeline.
Timeline.
We already have a motion for that.
Yeah, I already moved on that, so...
Right, and we were at the discussion point, so that's...
Okay, all right.
We don't mean that they...
Come on, let's begin anyway.
So now we just can vote as a table. Okay, so we don't have to do an amendment, or nevermind. Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. I can hear what you're saying.
See, good.
You, you text our board chair?
I have a real quick question.
Yes.
It should be quick. If somebody emails one of us and says they're interested in the position, we meet with them, correct? Because we would know, we would know who they are with their application.
I would definitely encourage them not to identify themselves. Sometimes people put their name or other identifying features in the question there.
You know, I suppose you're like...
I think on the front end of that process.
Yes.
Right, if somebody emailed me like three weeks ago, hey, do you wanna meet for...
Just ask questions, follow the challenge.
Oh, absolutely. We, we should be available to be resources for anyone that's interested.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely, yes.
See what, see what happens when you're not here? I would be gonna take away when you're invited back.
No, no, they're gonna, they're gonna sign you up for another 10 years.
We've rejected the resignation.
Yeah.
Invented, it's already exists.
It's a direct from most motions, so...
The four comes, then fills the seat.
There was some debate in there.
You like fun to watch.
Don't waste your time.
All right.
Oh, no, just minutes on our discussion.
Are we, uh, are we gonna do? Alright, so we're done with seven, so let's do our quick round robin. We do have a closed session, get you on your way, so. So let's do a quick round robin, I'll start with Judy and go that way.
Um, three of us were at a meeting, um, called by, um, our representative Craig and, um, about vaping. And I was shocked when I went into the room about the people that she had gathered together and, you know, was the head of pulmonary, um, uh, medicine at Children's Hospital and, you know, important people throughout the state. And afterwards, um, she said to me, I think it's really important when we have school board members who get the information too, because it isn't all about policy. It's also about what happens in the schools. And I thought, bravo, I totally agree with that. So it was, uh, very informative for me, surprising in many ways about what's going on with vaping. So I was really glad to be invited to that.
Kind of appropriate we address that in the policy meeting.
Yes, yes, I thought so too.
Joe?
I was at that same meeting, and it was, uh, yeah, there was so much information, so much good information about it. Last Wednesday, I was fortunate to be invited to be part of the interviews for the finance director replaced Jeff. We had five interviews, they were really good candidates. We, no matter which one is chosen, I think we'll be very fortunate because they're really good candidates.
Great. Kristy?
Policy meeting, committee meeting tonight. We worked really hard on trying to get some policies together for, um, 59 minutes. For our next board meeting, where we'll have several, um, that will be brought in front of you for a first reading. I was also at the vaping, um, discussion and, um, you know, my husband asked me about it, and I said, you know, I didn't feel very smart with the number of people, the types of people that were in the room. Just very highly educated, researching the topic and, um, yeah, there's, there's definitely some opportunities for us to educate our, our kids and, and people in our district. And the only other thing I'd have to add is, um, in December, I will be participating in the delegate assembly, representing Shakopee in District 17, I think it's.
14?
14, 17, something like that. One of those.
Joe's the right one.
This core of that poll, like his president, probably can follow.
It's myself, I think there's a couple of people from Jordan, somebody from Prior Lake, uh, maybe somebody from La Conia, if I remember right. So I was surprised to read that they didn't get enough delegates in certain parts of the state. So, so that was somewhat surprising to me. But so I'm excited to, thought it was a good opportunity to learn more about the legislative process and we're involved.
Representatives.
Thank you.
That's great.
Dave?
Last week, we did the second half of the prepare training in the group. So really, this was with our school mental health professionals, and it was very good, and we're in the process of putting together kind of a long, short-term action plan on how we really systematize our, uh, school crisis and safety responses, both physically and psychologically. So, good training, really good group in there.
Keith? Good. Ash? Val? Jeffrey? Good. Okay, Sarah?
I'm good too.
First, first of all, I think, um, we should give our head football coach a round of applause. I was listening to the scores come in Friday evening, I'm a K fan, and they mentioned Shakopee as a dark horse for a top 10, top 10 team in the state right now. And they really talked up Ray Madden. So that, that was kinda, kinda fun to listen to. Both as a board member and a friend of Ray's.
Right.
And also, I will likely be missing the 28th meeting because I will be heavily medicated. And we're in practice.
Wait a minute. We're not supposed to be here.
Well, you know, you know, first of all, I would have to invite people into my home so I could attend remotely. My wife's not for that.
Alright, we miss it, everybody, good luck. Matt?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Daniel? I was gonna say something about football in the sense that, you know, I think it's wonderful the way the team is playing, even though the record doesn't necessarily show it. To be able to actually hang with the perennial powers shows where we come, and it has to be, you know, exciting for the city and the school, the players, and it is wonderful. Again, record notwithstanding, great job. That's fun. Mike?
I've talked quite a bit. The one thing I do wanna do is just say thank you to Keith Gray. You know, you talked about the finance director interviews and that Keith and his team do just a fantastic job, ton of like work, ton of preparation, and so, thank you, Keith.
Alright, upcoming meetings, uh, there's a whole laundry list of things, but let's just highlight a few, so we have, is there a facilities meeting?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so there's actually one, certainly one's listed here, is, we have one on 23rd. We have finance, uh, looks like finance is gonna be busy next meeting, finance, personnel, school board.
Tomorrow, the facilities is the community facilities.
That's not, that's more... Alright, I'm getting my facilities mix up.
Yes.
But anyway, that is tomorrow. Several things happening the next board meeting, 9th through the 28th, then we get into the series of feedback sessions based upon the topic of tonight, so that's...
Reg, one thing to short, while you were away, December 16th, we added a full board meeting. We're gonna have a special board meeting for the purpose of...
Interviews.
Interviewing, appointing candidates.
But not selected?
Not selected.
Okay.
Yeah, but just wanted to call that out publicly for those who tuned up while you were gone.
That's, no, that's actually good. Take off one. No. Okay, yourself. Alright. So with that, we are going to, I was looking for a motion, I don't remember how to do this, Sarah. Looking for a motion to close the current business session and to adjourn into a closed session.
Yes, pursuant to statute, 13D dot 03.
For the purposes of, uh, strategy on labor negotiations, this is very similar to what we've done before. I heard of...
No second.
Judy, second. Paul? All those in favor, if you can come to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned for that.